My pleasure, Edgins.
Good morning.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, my nation and my God. Indemnable, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming, for coming tonight. As most of you probably know, we've had a horrific tragedy occur in our little town. And I would like to have, begin our meeting with a moment of silence for Sue Sepforza, the Sepforza family, as well as Kristen and Tim Kilty and the Kilty family. Thank you. We have a very packed agenda tonight, including three public hearings. I'm going to actually suspend the order of the agenda and take the Eagle Scout project presentation from Patrick Sasso first. So, Patrick, could you approach the board?
Hello, everyone. My name is Patrick Sasso. I am a member of Boy Scout Troop 44 in Newbury, and I am here in front of you tonight to propose my Eagle project. I wish to place a 25-foot aluminum flagpole on Manters Field in Byfield. I have received approval from James Surett at the DPW, from the Recreation Committee of the town, and from Spirit of Adventure Council at the BSA. I wish to start on June 11th, and I hopefully can have it finished the same day or the next day on June 12th.
Wonderful.
I also have pictures of where it's going to be placed exactly, if any of you would like to see them.
We would like to see it. Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, could you explain to us what we're looking at?
So, this, in this picture is the fieldhouse at Manters Field, and the area that is circled is where I wish to place the flagpole.
Okay. And how tall is the flagpole going to be?
It is 25 feet tall.
25 feet tall.
I think it's great.
Any questions from the board? Jerry? Jeff?
No, I think it's great. James has looked it over and approved of the location. It's fine. I think it's great. Nice job.
James?
I love it.
I like it.
It's great, too. I just do have one question. The flag, who's going to be responsible for raising and lowering the flag?
As long as the troop is around, I will make sure that the troop takes care of that.
Okay, so it's going to be the troop's responsibility?
Yes.
So, will it go up and down every day?
I wasn't planning on it, because I will have a light at the top of the flagpole.
Okay.
But I will try to make sure it is raised and lowered when needed.
Okay, so it will be illuminated when it's flying at night?
Yes.
And, I have another question. It will come down, like, in bad weather?
Yes.
And you guys are going to own it all? That's wonderful. Okay. So, I will entertain a motion to accept the Eagle Scout project from Patrick Sasso.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you, sir. Okay, so that part is done. Now, I'm going to go back to the order of the agenda and entertain some public comment. So, to receive oral communications from members of the public, members of the public may address the select board for up to three minutes, longer with the permission of the chair. The select board shall not engage in discussion on topics raised during public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This agenda segment will be limited to 15 minutes unless extended at the discretion of the chair. And I will say, tonight, we have three public hearings that are posted that start at 7:15, so we will have a hard stop at 7:15. So, is there any public comment? Come on up.
Leslie Matthews, 111 Main Street. I just would like to point out to the community, say to the community that we have suffered a great loss here in town. The Sepforza family has been a mainstay for us for decades, and I would like us to maybe somehow figure into the Newbury Town Day to honor them. They will be reopening on Saturday, so anybody who would like to go and purchase, please attend.
Can you say that again? Reopening when?
Saturday.
This Saturday coming up?
This Saturday.
Do you have a time or anything?
Yeah, it'll be 10 to whenever.
They'll be opening at 10?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, this is the mainstay of their livelihood, and they would just like the people of Byfield and Newbury to come in and purchase. And please don't try to congregate and ask questions or do anything like that, but just respect their wishes and support the family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment tonight?
Hi, everybody. Justin Landergin, 38 Larkin Road.
Hi, Justin.
How's everyone doing?
Good.
So, I want to read a shortened version of a letter that we, that 50 citizens in Newbury and Georgetown sent to the Newbury Port News. It was published in the newspaper. And then I want to make some comments after that. So, this is a quote from that letter. "In the weeks following town meeting, citizens have learned that the select board intends to ignore an article that was voted on and passed by the will of the people at Newbury Town Meeting by a two-to-one margin. After months of meetings with concerned citizens, Newbury's Select Board voted to allow Article IV to be decided by the will of the town at annual town meeting. We understand that through third-party feedback that you chair intend to claim that Article IV is a non-binding referendum. So, I know that you can't necessarily answer questions, but our questions are, does the town of Newbury intend to ignore votes and the will of its people whenever it wants? What is the point of town meeting? How can we call it the will of the people if the town can simply decide the people are wrong and ignore their votes? Are all the articles at town meeting non-binding?" That's just a sample of the letter that was in the paper. I also want to say, I received a letter from Tracy Blais. Thanks, Tracy, which listed all the reasons the town wants to refuse to honor the will of its people. And that letter referenced Town Council's interpretation of Mass Law Part 1, Title 14, Chapter 82. Council's interpretation omits a critical part of this law, which states that Newbury can pursue erection of a safety gate via mass DOT approval without consent from Georgetown. I want to quote that law now, because I think it's really important. "If within 90 days of the date of such hearing, in Newbury, that would have to happen to initiate the closure of the road, required by this section, there is no concurrence by the abutting city, town, or county into which the said way extends. The initiating city, Newbury, may make a written request to administrators for a highway in the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to approve of the said layout, alteration, relocation, discontinuance, or discontinuance of maintenance. If the said administrator so approves, the said layout, alteration, relocation, discontinuance, or discontinuance of maintenance shall take effect and be valid without the concurrence of the abutting city, town, or county," pardon me, "into which the said way extends." We ask you once again, honor the will of the people, honor our vote, work with the people, not against us, and honor democratic process. You will not go away.
So, I need to clarify some misinformation that you just said to the board, and we're not going to have a discussion on it, but we will, I just need to clarify the facts. Town meeting voted to appropriate $20,000 to purchase and install a gate. Massachusetts General Law lays out a pathway to get that road. You have your appropriation. That's what town meeting did. It appropriated the money.
Yep.
In the letter that the town administrator sent you, which I have a copy of it here, is the pathway to follow that.
Right. The letter omits, though, that if Georgetown does not concur...
Okay, so Georgetown has been asked, and its town administrator, its select board, its police chief, and its fire chief wish to not continue that road. So, if Georgetown, they want to keep the road open. So, if Georgetown has to have, as was written in this, this, this letter, it's a two, it's a, it's, it's, it takes place in Newbury, and it takes place in Georgetown.
Yep.
So, there is, as far as will of the people, that just means that the select board is going to do the will of town meeting. We're not going to stop it from, we're not going to vote for it, we're not going to vote against it. Okay? So, I think this is a, probably a misunderstanding, but the town of Newbury hasn't stopped anything, and the chair has not stopped anything.
So, what is the select board's position, then?
The select board, the select board has, has no, has no position. We voted back in 2016 to replace that road, to replace the culvert, which has been replaced to open the road.
Does the select board support the will of the people?
If, if the residents of the town of Newbury wish to discontinue that road, there's a process that they have to follow, and town meeting will speak. I can't speak for town meeting. I can't speak for the board. So, the, it's, it's a process. It doesn't happen overnight. So, now you have the process to do it. If the residents of the town of Newbury, all of them, choose to discontinue Larkin Road, they have to follow the process.
Yeah.
Okay? And I'm not going to answer. If you have, if you have any other questions, you can reach out to the town administrator or, you know, but right now, that's, that's that. Go ahead, Chair.
May I suggest that perhaps a lot has gone on, and there were, there were other meetings that the select board's, board didn't attend. Perhaps I would, I would move to put this matter on.
I'm not entertaining any motions. That's out of, out of order. I'm not, I'm not entertaining.
Well, actually, no.
We're at citizens' concerns, and now we're going to...
I asked for this to be on the agenda. It was ignored.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Landergin. Thank you so much.
And I would move it, and when you read what the citizen's concern is, the citizen's concern, you stated it yourself, it can, something can be put on the next agenda.
I'll take that under consideration.
And I'm moving, I'm moving, well, I'm moving to put it on for our next meeting.
That's out of order.
Well, if you...
I'm ruling that out of order.
Well, I take it.
You can ask me to put it on the agenda, but you're not going to move it.
Okay, well, then I will ask you to put it on the agenda.
You can ask me. Okay, thank you.
And I know you're not going to say no.
Duly asked. No, you've, you've asked me.
Right, you're not going to put it on.
I will consider it. Thank you. Are there any other citizens' concerns?
Yes.
Oh, hold on a second. We have two minutes.
Two minutes. On the clock. Okay, so, Bob Ross, 48 Larkin Road. Talked in front of you guys many times. So, I don't know what to say about this. I think when you give people the impression that they will have a vote that matters, and you call it the will of the people, and that vote is overwhelmingly in favor of that article, I don't understand why the town isn't working with the people to make it happen.
They are.
So, the letter clearly says, the lawyer, no, that's disingenuous. The letter says that they're worried about liability, which is a whole new thing.
No, no, the letter lays out a path on how to discontinue that, that road.
Okay, so I got it.
That path appears to be through town meeting, also in Georgetown. Where I stand on the legalities of it is, in my position here, I have to rely on the opinion of town council. It steers me correctly a lot more than it steers me incorrectly. And there might be differing legal opinions here, but I'm going to listen to the opinion of town council on this one. There is a path forward for you folks, and it's going to begin with a lot of work in Georgetown and Georgetown, town meeting agreeing to discontinue the road. There is a path forward, but you folks have to walk it. The select board can't legally walk it for you, from what I'm seeing right now.
Why not?
Because I would be in violation of the law, and that's not what I'm here to do.
You would be in violation of the law if you helped get the gate installed?
I'm sorry, Mr., it's 7:15.
No, I didn't, I didn't get my time.
I'm sorry, well, I'm sorry, I have a public hearing that I have to, I have to, so if you, if you, we can entertain, figure the rest of your conversation at a later point in the, in the meeting, but right now, we have a public hearing that's going to open. Jeff, can you please, can I entertain a motion?
Okay, so you'll need time later?
Please have a seat.
Okay.
Thank you. Can you, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Legal notice for the town of Newbury Select Board, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass., O-1922, public hearing. Notice is hereby given that Newbury Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 24, 2022, at 7:15 p.m. at the Newbury Municipal Offices, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass., on the petitioners of National Grid and Verizon, New England, Inc. Plan. Who's going to read it? This gentleman here?
Yes.
Yep, like usual. So, it is the plan 2876, excuse me, 2876-7660, request permission to install four JO poles, 142, 141, 140, 139, on Middle Road, Newbury, and erect, and maintain poles, wires together, and such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may hold necessary, and also to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, wires, in or above the intersecting ways.
I move to approve the petition of, oh, sorry.
No, no, no.
I thought I had to.
Nope, so, not yet. We're almost there.
Premature.
Okay, so, confirm, can Julie, can you confirm that all receipts and tear sheets from the newspapers were received, requested? And I would like to invite the applicant to come before the board and present.
John Butler, National Grid.
Hi, John.
The first petition is to extend our primary to serve a new facility at Governance Academy on a private road of theirs. And we have, in the past, for aesthetic reasons and other reasons, over the years, to try and maintain what we could underground, but the need and everything now is, seems to be the poles are a better option for them. And toward the end of the pole line, where there's already existing underground, it's narrow and wet, so the poles, in this case, seem to provide a better service for what's going forward and have the least amount of impact digging-wise and environmentally, I For quite some time, for aesthetics, underground's been installed, and all, and the poles have been kind of second choice, but we're getting to a point where the need is there, I think, for them.
Julie, has any written correspondence been received regarding this project? No. How about public comment? Thank you. I'll, if I need you to come back, I'll, I'll call you up. Is there any public comment here in regards to the public hearing for the moving of the poles on Middle Road?
I'll make a motion so the board can discuss.
Well, does the board have any follow-up comments first from Ms., from him? Okay, none? Jerry? Any comments? Dana, do you have any questions?
I just have a question. I am in a butter. Does that mean anything whether I, whether I should vote or not?
Recuse yourself. You should probably recuse yourself.
Okay.
Do you think it's a good idea? Yes.
I am a land of butter, so I'm, I'm going to not vote.
Recuse yourself. You know what? And then you need to actually physically get up and sit over on that side?
You've got to leave.
Actually, you need to, you need to actually leave the room.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I understand. So, you're, well, in the lobby, well, in the lobby or something?
Well, yeah, or you can go out this room here.
Yeah. I don't know if I can get out that door.
Yeah. So, now, seeing no public comment, the board doesn't have any further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the petition of National Grid, Plan Number 28767660, Middle Road, Newbury.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We can have Mr. Backer back, please.
Only if he behaves. Oh, he's here. Come on. Yeah. Come on. What's my back?
So, we have one done. Okay, Jeff?
My finest moments.
First of all, hold on, I'm sorry. Could I entertain a motion to open the second public hearing for...
Motion to open the second public hearing for National Grid.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Legal notice, town of Newbury Select Board, 12 Kentway, public, Byfield, Mass., O-1922, public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Newbury Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 24, 2022, at 7:15 p.m. at the Newbury Municipal Offices, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass., on the petitions of National Grid and Verizon, New England, Inc. On the plan number 30527113, request permission to remove one JO pole 24-1 on private property, relocate one JO pole 24-1 on 26th Street, Newbury, Mass., and erect, maintain poles, wires together with such sustaining, protecting fixtures and it may find necessary, and also to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in and above the intersecting public ways.
Thank you. Julie, has all returned receipts and tear sheets from the newspapers? Yes. Have been received? Yes. Okay. Again, I'd like to invite the applicant up to present to the board, second pole petition.
The petition's at, at the request of the customer. It's common on the island to have poles on private property because of the lack of space and the narrowness of the right-ofways. But in this case, the old location for this pole pretty much interferes with them using the property, parking-wise and everything. So, they provided a surveyed plan of the right-ofway through a professional survey company, and I prepared the petition pretty much based on that and the town's tax map. And the location of the pole is shown in the public way, but I think as long as we've, the company has a responsibility to petition for it there, but because of the condition of the right-ofway and the access to the basin, when I finally stake it to be installed, I think there'll be a little negotiation with the property owner to get, make sure we have reasonable access to the basin in the placement of the pole.
How do we know that?
Well, it'll be in the right-ofway, but if there's any, there's only 10 feet to work with. But if they agree to provide a little latitude on that, then I'll take that into consideration when we set it.
What does that mean?
Well, what kind of access to the basin is it?
Actually, the access is...
Is it walking boats, canoes? What is it?
It's in pretty bad shape right now.
Yep.
I don't know who, I assume DPW. I don't know who has responsibility for it. I assume it's DPW. And it is in pretty bad shape access-wise. It's not drivable access right now. It's walkable access probably for a canoe or something, or a kayak, for someone who's in good physical shape to do it. But it's not, the access isn't the best right now.
And that's to, like, the tidal area in the basin?
It's the basin, yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's, yeah, the water's not always...
Always there, yep.
Not always there. But still, there's a responsibility to maintain that good access, access to it. I don't know whether, I don't know whether the DPW has regular maintenance on those or not. I know it's maintained and covered up to the installation of the sewer manholes. Beyond that, there's a significant amount of erosion and so forth. We don't have a responsibility to maintain that, obviously, and replace it.
So, I guess I need to clarify. What are you asking the board to do?
Approve the posi, approve the location within the right-ofway for the pole, so that we have, we have the legal responsibility to take it off their property since we don't have deeded access.
Okay.
This is a cagey one, you know, because supposedly we don't have something totally maintained, but we could interfere with the access by putting it there, and yet it should come off a person's private property, so, but you feel you can significantly get it out of the way for whatever, a little trailer, if they want to push a trailer down.
For the most part, oh, yeah, they'll have, worst-case scenario, they'll have nine feet. The pole isn't going to be more than four feet in diameter. But there's other environmental constraints on the right-ofway already.
I'm sure Tracy's taking notes on this, so, but that doesn't mean we should block the right-ofway either, so.
Oh, no. No, the placement of the pole will be the absolute minimum, that it has to be.
You've always done the right thing so far.
It's a little difficult to satisfy the situation on the island with poles. I understand that.
I have a quick question. Is there, this lot 164, is there a current easement for the pole to be on that lot?
No, that's why we have to take it.
That's, okay, that was, that was my only question.
Yeah, there's no deeded easement for it.
For the most part, on the island, you're talking what was originally beach houses and camps and things.
Right, right, yeah.
And the poles were placed, a lot of the poles were placed where it was best to place them at the time. And as time goes on, there's other, there's other needs, other locations don't suit the people, and if we don't have a legal easement for it, obviously, we won't be getting one. No one's going to give you one. I've got, our house service has been under debate now for almost, well, well over a year and a half, almost two years, to try and satisfy the situation and the neighbors at the same time, to get service to the property. It's, it's the nature of the island and change. It's come with time.
So, how, how, how wide is 26th Street? Tracy, do you know that I have to talk to you? Don't.
Wide is what?
26th Street. How wide is the street? Is it...
How wide is the right-ofway?
You said 10 feet, and the pole's going to take up about a foot, so there's going to be nine feet remaining.
Right, exactly.
As you go by that pole.
Right.
Right.
The, I call them right-ofways.
But it's 26th Street.
I mean?
On the map that we have, I have here, it's 26th.
No, it's 26th Street.
Right.
Right.
26th Street.
Right.
That's where you're going to move the pole, right?
Correct.
I don't like to delay these things, because I know how long it can take for people. It's something we should have...
Well, I'm wondering...
Public safety look at...
And we have town councils here, and I don't know if we can impede a right-ofway or allow it to be impeded.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if we need to get rescue or fire apparatus by it for, I just don't want to inadvertently make it so, like, all of a sudden, a fire truck can't fit down there, you know?
It's in keeping with the rest of the pole locations on the island.
No, I, I...
On, on the 10-foot right-ofways.
Right.
And there's, there isn't really another option.
So, excuse me. Yeah, even though it's...
Even though it says Twenty-S sixth Street, it's really more like a little pathway, isn't it?
Again, I think... I wasn't involved in... I don't know whether there's anyone here that actually was involved when the Title V thing came and Newbury Port and Newbury went through that, and that brought in water and sewer. At some point, there was, I believe, there was some kind of legal definition... the legal definition of all of these ten-foot right of ways got changed so that they could have water and sewer underground in them, if I'm not mistaken.
I guess what...
But for the most part, there's only... North End Boulevard, Southern Boulevard, and maybe the roads on the basin on the backside are wider than ten feet. Everything else is what was termed a ten-foot right of way. And the poles are supposed to be in it because we don't have permission to have them on private property. But...
It almost seems to me as if it's on the other side of the boulevard there, it's access to the beach. It sounds like it's the pathway giving access to the...
Yeah, but it's on the basin side.
Basin side, right.
Exactly right. That's why you could launch a canoe or...
Yeah.
This...
So it's not really a...
All the streets that end up on the... all the right of ways that end up on the basin, some of them are reasonably accessible to the water when the water's high enough to go in it. And some are not. And some things...
And most of them, if it's not, you're not walking out in the mud to get the canoe to water.
Right.
In other words, water's a long ways away from most of... when the basin runs out to find water.
At low tide, I don't think it'd be...
It's dry.
I don't think it'd be worth the effort.
No, it's dry. It's absolutely dry.
So it's in keeping with what we've done in the past in these situations where...
Yeah, so I guess that's a question that I have. Is this what's happening here? It's on other roads on the island, right? It's like it's on... is it on Twenty-seventh and on Twenty-Fifth?
Oh, yeah, it's the same on all of them. Same on all of them.
And do they have the right of ways on all of them too? I mean, the access to the basin on the others ones too, or no? Is that different? What's unique about this? If anything?
To the island, not much. I can tell you that right now. I've been serving the community for over twenty years, so it's been an ongoing transition, so to speak.
I hear that. When I was new at this, I did a lot of riding down to the island, and you look at the map, or you see a street sign, and you're looking, and it's a dune.
Well, again, snow fences and things over the years have eliminated right of ways, and then the dune grass grows and conservation won't let you move it. There's been a lot of change over the years. But I've tried to minimize the impact of it. In some cases, if it required the neighbors to agree on something, as long as it satisfied the electrical needs. Few times, there was some instances where the fire department was involved, though I thought they should be involved, so they made... they helped make some decisions on the location of things, but not in the case of a dead-end right of way to the basin.
Okay.
Sometimes I'll get DPW to come out and help me make a decision before I write a petition to avoid having a length on the process or go through it a couple of times. But in this case, I didn't see... I didn't see the need for it.
And these are the poles that are servicing those couple of houses too?
Actually, this pole serves the person petitioning.
That's what I figured. So you'll be able to move it as close as you can to the corner of that...
He owns both lots. The owner owns both lots, and I believe they have plans to use this second lot. And this is interfering with it.
Right in the way.
So they're willing to...
Okay. Do the board have any other additional questions? Jerry? Jeff? Has any written correspondence Julie has been given to us on this petition?
No, there has none.
Nothing. How about public comment? Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak to this pole petition on Plum Island? Okay. Seeing none, I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve of the petition of National Grid, Plan Number Oh five-two-seven-one-one-three, Twenty-S sixth Street, Newbury.
Second.
Any discussion?
My discussion would be that Mr. Butler has done a remarkable job over the years, and his reputation's on the line, so I'm sure he's going to do a good job on this one. So he's always had a great job down there, relocating the poles. That's why I have faith in him.
Okay. Well, if it's not in the right place, we can always move it again, right? Isn't that easy?
That's a perfect case of I won't say a word.
So... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You've got your two pole petitions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you for answering all of our questions.
I don't know who processes here. It's been a little while since I've been in, but I know the school appreciates the attention to the matter and getting it in hearings so that I could move the project forward. It's been on their books for quite a while, and now they've started it, and they're a little anxious.
Is this going to be the project for the marine environmental pot?
This is the new environmental study.
Yeah, right. It's awesome. Awesome. It's good.
It's been in the works for a long time.
Yep.
They're looking forward to it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we have a public hearing to determine whether a dog is dangerous, so...
Dangerous...
I'm going to read...
Dangerous nuisance, yep.
Yep, so I'm going to read the public hearing.
Do you want to open this one separate from the polls?
You're going to close.
Oh, yeah, you know what? We have to close. Let's close. Let's close it. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the Twenty-S sixth Street.
Motion to close public hearing on petition, National Grid, Plan Oh five...
Second, thank you, Julie.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I'm going to entertain a motion to open the dangerous dog... dog dangerousness nuisance hearing.
Motion over the dog dangerous nuisance hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you... I know a lot of the board members haven't done one of these before, and it can be some more complicated process for somebody that hasn't experienced this before. So maybe I'll just give everyone a little summary of what we're about to do.
Perfect.
Should I read this first, the public hearing?
Yeah, but I... you'll read the hearing notice. You'll also reference the materials that have been submitted to the board, both by the dog owner and by the police department and the animal control office. And then, basically, what we're doing here is having almost like a small informal trial. It's a fuzzy judicial process, so you take testimony from the animal control officer. I think there might be a police officer here as well. The dog owner's counsel, Attorney Cohen's here, he would be able to ask questions once the animal control officer and any other witnesses make their statements. And then Attorney Cohen and his client, if he wishes to do so, can also present evidence, make statements, submit additional documentation. You can ask questions of any witness, obviously. And then after that, I don't think I have to get into it now, but then, based on all the information you received today, you make a determination whether or not the dog's dangerous, a nuisance, or neither. And if there's a designation that the dog is a danger or it's a nuisance dog, there's some remedies that you can put in place. And that's all outlined in the outline that I sent over. Once we get to that point, I can go over all the legalese part of this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let me restart by reading the notice of the public hearing. So please be advised that on... well, it says April twelfth, the two thousand twenty-two, which was moved to tonight's date. At seven fifteen PM, the Town of Newbury Select Board will conduct a hearing to be held at twelve Kentway, Byfield, Mass., second-floor hearing room pursuant to General Laws, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven, to determine whether your dog is a dangerous dog or a nuisance dog as defined by General Laws, Chapter one forty, Section one thirty-six A. If the board finds that your dog is dangerous, it will also determine what measures it shall take to protect the public from your dog in accordance with General Laws, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven C. Alternatively, if the board finds that your dog is a nuisance, it may order you to take remedial action to ameliorate the cause of the nuisance behavior pursuant to General Laws, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven B. The subjects to be discussed at the hearing will include, but not be limited to, an alleged incident where on February sixth, two thousand twenty-two, at approximately five o'clock PM, your dog bit Mona Benoit three times inside your residence, from which Ms. Benoit suffered vicious wounds, as stated by the Antioch's Hospital Emergency Room Nurse who cared for her. Ms. Benoit reported the following injuries: a ripped left shoulder, a bite to the left armpit, and injuries from the back down to the hip. Ms. Benoit's wounds required at minimum eleven sutures. The nurse also stated that the wounds would take more than just suturing to repair the damage done. Indeed, the nurse suspected that the wounds would require surgery to repair. Two, an alleged incident where, in violation, the animal control officer's order of restraint on February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, at approximately seven twenty PM, you walked your dog outside of your property while it was unmuzzled and introduced it to several neighbors, also while unmuzzled. Three, alleged incidents where, in violation, the animal control officer's order of restraint on February eighteenth and February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, you walked your dog in your neighborhood while it was unmuzzled. Four, an alleged incident where your dog bit your brother, Steve Pearson, inside your residence by jumping on him and grabbing a hold of his arm just above his wrist. Your brother submits that your dog would not let go until you took it off him and put it in the cage. Your brother suffered only a couple of marks because he was wearing a long-sleeved shirt and a thick sweatshirt. Your brother also submits that he was surprised on how powerful the dog's jaw was and that the event was scary and shocking, causing him to not return to your resident because of how scared he is of your dog. Your brother also claims that he told you to get another dog, but that you refused. So this hearing is being held pursuant to the provisions of General Laws, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven, and you may appear on your own behalf or with an attorney, call in question witnesses, and present evidence. Copies of all of the reports and other records that may be discussed during the hearing have been provided to you. If you need additional copies, please let us know. So into the record, I'd like to just state that the town has received a November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one rabies certification, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two report from Shady Brook Animal Hospital, a February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two animal bite report from Antioch's Hospital, February sixth, two thousand twenty-two photo of Mona Benoit's injuries, February sixth, two thousand twenty-two order of restraint and order of quarantine, a screenshot of Mona Benoit's next-door social media post, February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, an order of restraint, on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, Newbury Police Department incident report with two narratives from Animal Control Officer Carol LaRocque, February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, email from witness number two, February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, voluntary statement from Amy Thurlow, March first, two thousand twenty-two, narrative of Detective Aaron Wojewski. Wojewski. March first, two thousand twenty-two, narrative of Sergeant Jason Takuna, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, narratives from Deputy Chief Patty Fisher, April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, a letter from the K-9 Edge Incorporated, and a photo of Epic. So I think I'd like to first call the animal control officer up. Carol, thank you.
LaRocque, Animal Control Officer and Animal Inspector for the Town of Newbury.
What would you... any... any comments and additions to this?
I have no jurisdiction of what happens in a person's home. The jurisdiction I have is we put a quarantine order. When I get a bite report, as Animal Inspector, when I get a bite report, I write out a quarantine slip, and that animal is quarantined for ten days. We also followed up with asking Mr. Pearson that after the quarantine period, if the dog was off of the property, it had to be on a three-foot leash, and it had to be muzzled. So even if, God forbid, it got away, it couldn't do any damage. Now, I have observed him many times walking the dog, and it has been properly walked. The times that I have been notified that it was without a muzzle on, I did not witness it. I'm not saying it didn't happen, I just did not witness it.
Okay.
That's about all I can be up to the board to determine.
All right.
What to be done.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just for a second. Is Ms. Benoit here?
Yes.
Do you wish to speak?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I can explain to you the event when it happened. I was watching TV, sitting on the couch reclined. Jim would have a habit of letting the dog out of his pen, and the dog was a lunatic, literally. Next thing I know, the dog charged me. I put my leg up to stop him. Next thing I know, he's on the couch, got a hold of me. I'm screaming for Jim to get the dog. Jim screamed at me to get into the bathroom as quickly as I could. I didn't realize it was that bad of an injury until I saw the picture. Now, I had a turtleneck on and a heavy-duty sweatshirt. Had I not had those on, he probably would have ripped my arm off. He tried to get me again when I was trying to go into the bathroom. I was in such shock, I didn't even know I was bleeding. Days after the incident, Jim would let the dog out, but this dog cage that he has, he'd close it. It didn't work very well, because the second day, the dog comes running up to the living room, wanted to jump over the gate. So at that point, the dog was no longer allowed if I was walking around in the house. If I was sitting up at my, you know, and having my coffee in the morning, and Jim would have to walk the dog, I'd have to go hide in the bathroom and close the door so Jim could take the dog out. I have witnessed on several occasions where this dog has got hold of somebody's arm. I have written proof from another trainer that indicated under no circumstances am I to be around this dog. As you see, I'm a little person. As you see, I'm a little person. This dog is twenty pounds less than I am. I can't walk around my house with this dog. Jim has now taken our rental property and is using it for the dog. I have witnessed that while the dog is on the run, he literally barks at everybody that walks by, and it's not a pleasant bark. And just the look of the dog, far as I'm concerned, is scary. I can never accept this dog in my life, ever. I've still got surgery I've got to be dealing with, years before the muscle is going to heal, because he went right down to the muscle. Jim knows how I feel about this dog, and I'm afraid that, being the age of the dog and not really having a history on it, he's going to do it again to somebody else. He's done it to three people already. Who's next? Jim keeps telling everybody that the dog was playing. I don't believe a dog can play and fight like that. I would like to have the dog go away from the neighborhood, be rehomed, so I don't have to worry, because I don't even want to walk out my yard when the dog's out there. And I know that there are people in this room that can verify that the dog doesn't like me. And I guess that's it.
Thank you very much for coming in here and speaking to us.
Are there any other witnesses or anybody wants to speak? Attorney Cohen, do you have any questions?
I do. There are two, sir. Do you want to stand there? Do you want to have her come up?
Any way you want. Yes.
All right.
Actually, the microphone is what goes out over the television air, so...
Why don't you come up here?
Please.
Dog owner here.
Could you raise your hand? Thank you.
Maybe they can both stand up.
Yeah, I think if you both stand here, that would be helpful.
Okay. My name is Jeremy Cohen, and my law firm is Boston Dog Lawyers, and I represent Jim Pearson. I have a few questions for the Animal Control. In reading the police report, there's four witnesses that the town puts a lot of time into, to find out that there were times where he was walking the dog without a muzzle. And you sent him a letter. So the perception is that he was in violation of an order, because he was ordered by you to have the dog with a muzzle on. Problem is, you issued, and this is in the police report, you issued an order of canine restraint. Remember this?
Yes.
Okay. And it says MGL one forty-one fifty-seven, right? So can you tell me, who authorized you to do this, to issue an order of restraint?
Well, it's in my job description to protect the public, so I ordered the dog to be muzzled. Muzzle order.
Who ordered, under one forty-one fifty-seven? Can you point to where you have the authority to issue such an order? Because you put it at the top of the list as being authoritative, because it fell under one forty-one fifty-seven. So it must be an order that he violated, because you said it. You said one forty-one fifty-seven. I will tell you, there is nowhere, under the law, that you have the authority to issue a muzzle order. Yet, you told him that, under the law, I am issuing a muzzle order. So what you did was, and then the police said to the witnesses, please call us again if you see this. So you enabled the deputizing of the neighborhood to rat on him if they saw him without a muzzle, thinking that he was violating an order. So you've already convinced the Board that he was in violation of a muzzle order, but you didn't have the legal authority, nor you, to put in a muzzle order. You cite one forty-one fifty-seven, but one forty-one fifty-seven, as you see, begins after a person files a complaint and the hearing authority gets involved, in terms of conducting an investigation. And only after a hearing like this can a muzzle order be put in. So the idea that you were acting under one forty-one fifty-seven, that actually, by restraining the dog, and putting restraint, and sort of taking his property and that freedom away, you actually overstepped your bounds as a police officer. So my question is...
I instructed her to do that, and I would do it again. It was the proper thing to do while there was a process to determine...
I understand that.
...the safest thing to do. So if you have a problem with how that process was done, I told her to do that.
Okay, so tell me, why would you have issued an order under one forty-one fifty-seven when there hadn't been a hearing and when you have no legal authority to do that?
My understanding is, and before there's a hearing, that's the interim to keep the situation, you can shake your head, but regardless of what the paper says, that was the right thing to do.
Well, but regardless of what the paper says, you have people believing that he was in violation of an order that was, there was no order, there couldn't have been an order.
Then address that part of it with your dissertation. Don't address the safety precautions that were in place. That's my suggestion.
No, no, no. The police don't get to use the law without it actually applying. So my point is, I want to know, did you look at one forty-one fifty-seven and say, he can have a, let's just muzzle the dog? Because you tell him you did.
Mm-hmm.
And you're telling the Board that, hey, we have a law here that he violated, but he didn't violate the law, right?
I have no problem saying, sure, if there's something in there that does not give me that authority to instruct her when she came to me and asked me how to handle it. Sure, I'll take that responsibility, that, yes, I told her to put that temporary order until the hearing process is done.
Okay.
As far as removing liberties and such like that, there was no decision made other than, let's keep the dog safe. And as far as if anybody was elicited as deputizing to watch and report things, we always encourage the neighborhood and people in this community to report anything that concerns them to us.
Okay.
And those concerns are being reflected here, and if there's a problem with the substance of those concerns, I suggest that those are the concerns that you address here, not our actions to try to safeguard while we're waiting for this process to happen.
But I am here.
Okay, good.
I am here. I am addressing them here.
Okay, good.
You did not have the authority to do that.
Okay.
Okay? I've addressed my concern.
That's your position.
I want to know where you...
Okay.
Well, so I'm not...
I'm sorry if I introduced myself to this, but I'm with my employee.
That's okay.
Okay, but the point is, while I understand the muzzle order, and actually, it's worked quite well.
Mm-hmm.
What hasn't worked is now, these folks are of the opinion, that there was an order in place that he violated. You even stood up here earlier and said, I asked him to use the muzzle. So you even said in your testimony that you asked. So my point just is this...
Don't tell me what my opinion is. Thank you.
When have I told you your opinion?
You said that is our opinion.
Well, no, I said she's influencing the opinion.
Go through me.
We go all night then. This was wrong, okay? So I just want to make the point, and then we can move on to more substantive stuff, that he was not in violation of an order. That's not an opinion, it's a fact. He was not in violation of an order. Now we can move forward.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I put myself in this, and I shouldn't have done that.
Oh, thank you.
Our town council agrees with that reading of that law that way, that the chief doesn't really have the ability for emergency to...
I don't think that's appropriate. Yeah, I think you need to just go through me.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have another question for the Animal Control Officer, and just one more. As the Animal Inspector, you do both, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I do.
So a medical doctor has a legal requirement to notify the Animal Inspector or the Animal Control Officer when there's a bite, correct?
Correct. It comes from the hospital.
Okay. And you got a notification from the hospital?
Yes, it goes to the police department, and they let me know there's a bite report.
Okay. And then you called the hospital here?
No, I didn't call the hospital.
When did you speak with Barb?
Oh, yes. I wanted to know the extent of the wounds, because at that time, I had no picture to go by.
Okay, but isn't the purpose of...
I wanted to make sure that it was a direct, I mean, it was a bite that went, you know, into the skin. Because if it goes through the person's skin, then I have to quarantine the dog for ten You get a bite report, you have to quarantine the dog for ten days.
Understood. Because of the concern about rabies, right?
Correct.
Not anything to do with the behavior of the dog.
No, no, no. It is a rabies.
Okay.
Yeah, right. Correct.
So getting that bite report, which indicated, it indicated there was a bite through the skin?
Correct.
But you still called the nurse, Barb?
Yes.
Okay. And through her, you were able to glean what her opinion of the bites were, right? She used the word vicious?
No, she did not use the word, well, she said it was a real bad bite.
Well, in your report, you said she said it was a vicious bite.
Okay, she said it was very bad, yeah.
No, she said it was a vicious bite.
She has, all right, I'm sorry.
So vicious just has a connotation to it. So I'm just wondering, as Animal Inspector, was this person authorized to share medical information with you beyond what the report required?
I have no idea.
How was that not in violation of HIPAA?
I don't know. I have no idea.
And is it typical for the Animal Inspector to call the medical facility when there's a bite?
I don't know. That's the first time I ever had.
Okay.
Because I heard of the, how bad it was.
Okay.
No, I have never done it before. It always comes to me.
Thank you.
All the info. Thank you, sir.
No questions of Miss Benoit, thank you.
You're done?
Yes, thank you.
Do you have any...
Before I bring up our witnesses, just want to make a quick statement, and that is this, that having spent time with Mr. Pearson, I don't represent every pet owner who comes to me whose dog bites somebody. And this is just such an odd situation, because it happens to be his long-term girlfriend. And he got the dog in January, so it's a dog that's relatively new to him, but not a relatively new dog. It's about four years old, three to four years old, weighs about seventy pounds. His original owners, Epic's original owners, had to turn Epic over to a shelter because they were moving. And my client spoke with them, Mr. Pearson spoke with them, they were moving, they loved the dog. They assert no prior issues, and so does the rescue that sent the dog to Mr. Pearson. But of course, I went to his house and met him, and saw him walking the dog, said, why? You know, why, why not just, it's so close to home, why don't you just put the dog down? He said, because I haven't given it a shot yet. It's not fair to him. I haven't spent the right time. I haven't been the right manager of him. I don't even know the dog yet. It's, that is a last resort. I want to put some effort into him first. I feel like I owe him some effort. And so, once I heard that, I realized I owe him some effort. And I can tell you that the Animal Control Officer spent a lot of her reports saying, he didn't rehome the dog. I told him to rehome it or euthanize it. Well, first of all, the idea of rehoming should never come from a government official, because it's unlawful. But secondly, you know what? He did rehome the dog. He moved with his dog to thirty-six Cottage from thirty-two. That might not be the resolution we'd want if we had a long-term relationship with somebody, but that's a relationship he wanted to have, and he still has, and he wanted to be with his dog and spend time training him and getting to know him and see if he can turn this dog around. And part of doing that was he went to K-9 Edge in Peabody, and there's two witnesses you'll hear from tonight, who have spent seven sessions with Mr. Pearson and with his dog, Epic. The key is with both of them. And from the day that they started, I've seen a report card where Mr. Pearson, he was not a good dog owner. There were simple commands that this dog didn't even know yet, and that's the previous owner's fault, too, but he didn't have good recall, couldn't go do it down, almost not even sit, and he was easily distracted. And that's on the dog, but it's on the dog owner, especially when he wants to take responsibility to try to fix this. And from week one to week seven, you'll hear the progression, as how he has got better as a manager of the dog, and how he's willing to take the responsibility of muzzling his dog, of three-foot leashing his dog, and of ongoing training with this dog. We can, there are so many things to do before you kill a dog. And part of what you'll hear tonight from the trainers are all the things that can be done, because we're too smart to just say, a dog bit, so kill it. There are too many other things to try first. And amazingly, what you'll hear is that they're actually putting him on a track for what's called the AKCCGC, the American Kennel Club Certificate of Good Citizenship, K-9 Good Citizenship Certificate. In order to get that, you have to go through a tempar test. The evaluators are trained by AKC. Not anybody can train to it. And the trainers actually believe that Epic could pass this test, and a lot of dogs don't pass it on the first time. But the beauty of the AKCCGC is that it requires both the owner and the dog to go to training and to do a lot of homework at their house. They've been doing that homework. Given all the circumstances and all the weird twists and turns that this case could have because of their relationship, Mr. Pearson has made the commitment to his dog. So we're asking you tonight to make the commitment to him, to at least give him an opportunity to continue to work with his dog. The first person I'll call is Kathy Copeland from K-9 Edge. Could you introduce yourself, tell a little about yourself, please?
My name is Kathy Copeland. I've been a dog trainer at the K-9 Edge. I've been training there for seven years. I have over twenty years of dog training experience. I've competed in a sport called Schutzen, which is tracking obedience and protection. I specialize in the power breeds, what they consider the strong, the powerful dogs, the rottweilers, the German shepherds, the bully breeds. Those are my specialties.
And how, when did you meet Mr. Pearson? Do you remember?
Actually, a friend of his reached out to us and asked us, as a favor...
Actually, please. I'm sorry, I'm not going to do this as a question and answer. I'm just going to let her speak, it'll take forever if I do it that way.
Thank you.
So could you just share your information?
A friend of Mr. Pearson's reached out to us and said, Diana said she has a friend who has a dog. A friend of hers has a dog, and they need help with training. Would we be interested in doing just an evaluation? That there was a dog bite. I reached out to Stephanie, who's the owner of the K-9 Edge, gave her what Diana had told us. Stephanie said, if you want to do the evaluation, do the evaluation. So we relayed the information back. We had Mr. Pearson come and do the evaluation. I evalled Epic. He came in. Mr. Pearson brought him in on leash. I observed them for approximately twenty minutes on leash, watched their behavior, watched how they acted, and then I had Mr. Pearson take him off-leash, so I could watch his behavior, watch how he approached me. I put a little pressure on Epic by going into his area to see what he would do if he had pressure applied to him. In no way did he show any type of aggression towards me. At that point, Mr. Pearson and I had a conversation about taking him on as a training client, and I agreed to do that. We meet every Sunday at ten o'clock at the K-9 Edge for training sessions, and we now have had eight sessions. Jeremy did say seven, but we just had one a couple days ago. And we have multiple training sessions, working on obedience, recall. His basic obedience has gone from pretty much... has gone from pretty much nonexistent to, like Jeremy said, you know, he barely knew sits, downs, stays, to he can, his sits are absolute, his downs are solid, he can do a sit-stay from thirty feet away and hold that position for up to two minutes. Mr. Pearson is doing all the homework assignments that I give him, and, and he's exceeding them, he's doing more than I ask. If I tell him to do work on a sit-stay or a down-stay from twenty feet, he'll push it to thirty feet and put, add thirty seconds to the time I ask him to do. So, he, he's not only asking what I'm doing, or what I'm asking him to do, but he's doing more.
Kathy, have you had a chance to look at all the paperwork?
Yes, I have.
Okay, including the pictures, push reports?
Yes.
And can you, can you talk about what the CGC is?
The K-9 Good Citizen is a test that you administer to dogs, and it's actually, it's the precursor to basically having dogs become like emotional support animals, service dogs, things like that, therapy dogs, it's just having your dog be a upstanding member of society, it's a dog that you can take out in public, that you can trust to be a well-behaved member. I do believe Epic is on course to being on there, in two, I would say, two to three months, Epic will be able to pass this test. I've had, in multiple times, in our training sessions, I've put pressure on Epic to the point that I would have expected an act of aggression if he was an aggressive dog, for him to react to me, and he hasn't, he's turned away from me and gone back to Mr. Pearson. He is not an aggressive dog, in my opinion.
Kathy, when you think of, when Mr. Pearson first came to you and filled out paperwork and told you about the dog, dog's history with him, what the, what he found were problems with the dog, and about the bite, do you find that he was honest with you?
Absolutely honest.
Can you talk about his, his level as an owner, his commitment to, to making sure this doesn't happen again?
He's been extraordinarily committed to everything Epic needs to being an upstanding dog, member of the community, he's actually said, "Well, what if we try this?" Like, we, we're talking about Atlas walking better, we've now instituted a training collar so Atlas does not pull. I'm sorry, Atlas, Atlas is a dog I was just training today.
Atlas was training before.
Epic, we've instituted the training collar on Epic, so he's walking well, he doesn't pull. In regards to Epic's barking, we, he's actually come to me and said, "What about a vibration collar?" So, if he does bark, we can train to the enough command and the vibration collar, and people are like, "Oh, my God, vibration collars, that's cruel, that's anything," it's a wireless leash, and it's basically just you give the command and you give the vibration, it's the correction.
Which is separate from the leash that's already on?
Correct, correct.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
And you've confirmed Epic is neutered?
Epic is neutered.
Okay, and have you had, have you ever been part of a dangerous dog area before?
I have.
And have you ever recommended that a dog should not be living with the person it's living with? Have you ever recommended a dog needs to be put down?
Actually, there was a time that I did recommend, and it was surprisingly, I had to, it was a twelve-week-old golden doodle, and this dog was genetically predisposed to being extremely aggressive. Steph, I believe you remember this dog, it was very sad, it was in my puppy training class, and this dog was extraordinarily aggressive, it kept lunging at its owner. This owner had children, I told her, you know, "Don't allow this dog to interact with your children," I said, "Let's continue to try to train, train it," we did a try-training it for four more weeks, I said, "This dog genetically is not right, I said, 'We need to call the breeder.'" We called the breeder, the breeder came down, we did a co-evaluation, and we had to recommend euthanasia for the dog.
Have you, have you, in your work with Epic and with Mr. Pearson, have you thought, "Well, this dog's not going to make it, this dog can't be trained," have you thought that this dog is out of options in terms of what people can do by working with them?
Absolutely not, absolutely not, Epic absolutely is a dog that can be trained and be an upstanding member. He is probably one of my biggest success stories so far in just a short amount of time, from what he knew from when I first met him to the eight sessions I've done with him, just in how far he's come obedience-wise, and that's the commitment Mr. Pearson is putting in to making him a great dog.
Today, we heard testimony that there's been three bites, is that the first time you've heard that there was a third bite?
Yes.
Okay, and, because it's not in any report that you get, right?
No.
Okay, can you speak to the fact that the two bites that did occur, one of them didn't require medical attention, but they both occurred at the house, knowing the dog had only been there about a month, just, can you read anything into that about the dog's behavior?
Territorial, territorial, I'll speak first off on the second one, with his brother walking into the house. Now, I'm, I'm sorry, my dog doesn't understand my siblings, my dogs, a person walks into my house, my dog is not going to know that's a sister or a stranger, so he's going to protect me, I have a German Shepherd, my German Shepherd is my service dog, he's going to take the appropriate action and sit in front of me. So, what Epic did was just, you know, it, it's a territorial issue. Now, I don't believe Epic was aggressive, Epic, when you read the way that it happened, was engaging in play, Epic jumped up and, and played, which a dog does, dogs like to play tug. Now, his brother started screaming, so as soon as you start screaming, a dog gets excited, that elevates the play, and then his brother started pushing him, so now his brother started engaging in the game of tug with the dog. So, his brother elevated the situation and made it a game with the dog.
Thank you. I'll bring up Mr. Pearson, and I didn't say this in the opening, but based on the law and the definition, well, I'm not telling you what you should do or think, I'm telling you what we think, and we think that Epic fits the label of a dangerous dog, and, which opens up the, the options that you have. Same time, we think that we, he should continue with the short leash, which is one of the remedies you have there, and the muzzle because it's working. And so, I'm going to bring up Mr. Pearson, just to talk briefly about what's happened and, and what he's doing about it.
Hi.
Well, I'm really very committed to this dog. I don't think he deserves to be put down, I don't actually just think he deserves right now to be muzzled. He's going to training with me, and he's doing, I think, extremely well, and I'm sorry, years ago, when I had other dogs, I, I didn't go for professional training, because I'm amazed what they, what they do and what they train me. I'm sorry that the, the bite had to happen.
Can you tell briefly about how you, what you've learned to, to manage your dog better?
Yep, I'm using a, it's not a shock collar, it's a, it's a vibrating collar, so if he doesn't follow a command, when I give one, I give him a little vibration on his neck, and he just wonders what it is, he stops and pays attention to me, and I've been using that for three weeks, and it's worked extremely well. As for being real protective of me, if people come to the door or something, he no longer will, will bark, and I'm just, I'm just amazed how, how well it's worked in such a short time. And I plan on to keep on going to training, because I'm really impressed with these people and how they, how they can train, and not only, not only the dog, it's, it's myself.
Okay, that's, I don't, I don't have any other questions for you, but, and to the extent you have anything different to offer than Kathy, you want to speak at all? Just introduce yourself, please.
My name is Stephanie Angel Acosta, I'm the owner of the K-9 Edge, I am a certified dog trainer from North Boston Dog Training, Master Dog Trainer Mike Carrington, I'm an AKC evaluator and trainer, I'm a Schutzen participant, and I'm also one of the trainers at the Edge. When Mr. Pearson came into our facility, I had not met Epic yet. Kathy's the lead trainer, we switch off, I'm a lead trainer, she's a support trainer, vice versa. She asked me to come in and meet Epic and Mr. Pearson, and we typically do not take every dog bite case, because most dog bite cases are a combination of the dog and the handler, and if handlers do not want to listen to instruction, follow instruction, then the dog is not going to be trained, no dog is going to be trained unless it's a combination of the handler and the dog. We did a test with Epic, and the test was, he did not know me, so we are trying to emulate what happened with his brother. His brother, the dog, didn't know. Mr. Pearson knows his brother, but Epic didn't know his brother. And one of the things you don't do with any dog is walk into a dog's space. Mr. Pearson is Epic's space, his home is his space, his car is his space, this is Epic's world. So, I emulated Mr. Pearson's brother. We have a big training center, Area One, Kathy's working the dog, Mr. Pearson's handling Epic, this was fourth lesson?
Fourth lesson.
Fourth lesson. The reason I did this, I wanted to put pressure on Epic, not physical, make the dog uncomfortable to get him to react. The second thing I wanted to do was to see how Mr. Pearson could handle the dog, because the dog may obey, but if he's not being handled correctly, he's not going to obey anything. I walked into the space unannounced, I looked in, she gave me the high sign, I walked in unannounced, we have big rattly door, six feet from me, "You never do this, don't ever do this, don't ever walk into a dark space, you don't know, I don't care if it's a chihuahua, don't do it." I walked right up. He had ready position, Epic, on leash, stay. Epic's looking at me, no lip curl, no big hair, no growl, no movement, he's just looking at me like, "Who are you?"
But we don't know, are those things signs of-
Signs of reactivity and aggression, dog gets big hair, he's trying to make himself look bigger, growl, it's a warning, lip curl, watch those lips, that means that dog's getting ready to do something. Epic did nothing. Epic was looking at Mr. Pearson, which is one of the things we train, focus, we want the dog to focus on the handler and not what's going on in the environment. That dog didn't move. Then the second test I did as I went toward Kathy, Kathy is part of Epic's surrounding, to see if Epic would react, and I could do this with Kathy because we work together, right up to her, very fast. Epic's, now, Epic, Kathy's here, Epic's here, Mr. Pearson's here, I'm here, dog didn't move, he's looking at Mr. Pearson, one of the things we teach is focus. The third thing was, I have to go up to Mr. Pearson, "That's dangerous, don't do this with a dog you don't know." I went right up to Mr. Pearson, right next to him, off him. The dog is looking at Mr. Pearson, that's after the fourth class, that tells me the dog is being trained and Mr. Pearson is learning how to handle his dog. I do not believe this dog is aggressive, I think this dog just needs to understand what's proper and what isn't. If this dog was aggressive, it would have bitten me badly.
Are you able to tell if the dog had been trained before?
Yes. He didn't have any training, he, I mean, we all have dogs, Fido, come, come, dog comes, we think that's training, it's not, Fido's reacting to what he's used to, he sees you say, "Come," you back up, the dog comes, there was no training. Epic, when we first saw Epic, was throwing behaviors, if you stand there long enough and you pull the leash off, the dog is going to sit, you're saying, "Sit, sit, 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 pull, 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 pull," dog's going to sit, he's kind of, kind of guessed that, there was no training there. The other thing was, as nice as a person he is, Mr. Pearson was not handling the dog correctly. I mean, he was walking in, he had the leash, Epic was pulling, and he's like, "Epic, stop, Epic, stop, no." You have to be the person in charge, you have to be the leader, one of the things we tell people who get rehomed dogs is they're not rescues anymore, they've been saved, they're adopted, they've hit the adoption law, do not feel bad for them, don't coddle them or whatever, they need to learn the rules. If you're not going to commit to them learning the rules, then don't keep the dog. He was not trained at all.
Thank you.
Oh, fancy, I need a-
That's all we got, thank you.
Mike?
Does the, do any of the board members have any questions of Pearson or, I mean, the people from K-9?
Okay, Jerry?
Yes, okay, Ms. Copeland or your boss, you, you, Ms. Copeland, you say the dog's not aggressive, and, and you say that the problem with his brother was the dog interpreted the brother's action as playful, what, what, how do you, how do you explain what he did to Ms. Benoit? I mean, also, Ms. Benoit is, is in, she's part of the territory, so he should be, he should be used to her, I guess I'm concerned where she characterized, "The dog is, the dog doesn't like me." Well, what's, what's going to happen, not when he meets a stranger, but when he meets somebody he doesn't like? Is this going to be a problem again?
And, and it's not a situation of whether the dog liked her or not, I wasn't there that night, I can only interpret what was described as, it was very detailed when Epic met Mr. Pearson's brother. Now, I don't know what happened prior to Epic biting Mrs. Benoit, it sounds like there was some other things going on, I wasn't there, I don't know, I know what, some of what was told to me, I can't guarantee it, I know some of what she said raised a couple questions in my head, like she said she raised her leg, why didn't Epic bite her leg?
He did.
But there's nothing in the reports that say you had a bite on your leg, so.
May I speak? Okay.
You need to come up.
Okay, sorry. What I understand with this fight happened, you'd only had Epic for about a month, and after a month, jumping, two months.
Okay.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, oh, okay. There's a, there's a period when a dog is rehomed, even with puppies, called the decompression period, it's a period of time where it can range from two weeks to three months, depending on the situation. When a dog comes in a home, he does, especially an older one, it's like getting a new job, the first thing you want to find out is, where are the bathrooms, where do I eat? The only thing you would do with that dog for six to eight weeks, maybe longer, is take the dog to the bathroom, feed the dog, no new introductions, no walks, no trips to Petco, the, it's schedule, 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 consistency, frequency, repetition, no new people, no new anything. Obviously, Mr. Pearson and Ms. Benoit were part of the pack, but the dog was still new to the home. I don't know if this happened or whatever, but I noticed she has a cane, that's a strange object to a dog. If a dog is not used to a cane, that could be viewed as, "What is that?", I don't know, it's all about familiarity. She may have not done anything wrong, she may have done something she didn't realize it, but the dog was still in a new situation, and at that point, that dog, the only thing that dog does, eat, sleep, get out of the crate, go for a walk, everything is structured, no new people, no new events, that's how you decompress a dog. Two weeks is a very short time, and in two weeks, the dog didn't know Mr. Pearson, the dog didn't know Ms. Benoit. Thank you.
Mary?
Yes, and this is a general question to the, you folks who are familiar with the dog, I, I, do you know what his background is, I mean, as far, I take it he's from down south- Yes, and this is a general question to you folks who are familiar with the dog. I, do you know what his background is? I mean, as far, I take it he's from down south?
Right, from Texas, I believe, well, you spoke to them.
Yeah, I actually was able to track down, I'm sorry, I was able to track down the original owners that had him for four years, Columbus, Georgia. And they were renting a house and had to move, and the house that they could move into wouldn't allow pets. So they sought out a non-kill shelter. And he spent a year and a half in two separate shelters. He was actually rescued from the first shelter after a year by another shelter because someone noticed he wasn't being taken care of.
But, so, I mean, he was, he was a pet, a family pet?
Yeah, he was a pet, I spoke to them, and they had absolutely no problem with him. He said he was a very timid dog and other dogs would beat up on him. And, I forget what I was going to say now. They actually asked me if they could come up here and visit with him. I told them yes, but as long as it was in a neutral place somewhere, I didn't actually want them coming to my home, kidnapping them or something.
Okay. Yeah, can you continue until?
Okay, actually, this is a question to Ms. Benoit, you can just stand there. You described the dog as being a lunatic?
Oh, yes.
Is that only when he's released from his cage, or is he, does he act like that all the time?
Well, the first two, three weeks was absolutely horrible. Any cushions that he had on the chairs, we just picked them up because he is going to chew them. He would run around the living room, and Jim had all he could do to stop him. Jim tried bringing him upstairs into the bedroom, that didn't work. The dog chewed, I don't know how many beds that Jim had in his tent. The barking, the jumping, the jumping was absolutely horrible. And Jim couldn't get him to listen, so he spent a lot of time in his tent.
Hey, Jim?
And my, my other question for you, prior to, to your bite, you were on the couch, you were lying on the couch, you were not having any kind of interaction with the dog, so he could mistake your actions for something, a threat? None at all?
No, I was watching TV.
And you're no, so you're no longer in the house with the dog?
That is correct. I had told Jim that under those circumstances, do I want that dog on the property?
Thank you very much.
Is he abiding by that? Not really.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Benoit.
Anything else, Jerry? Thank you.
Madam Chair, briefly, excuse me, but there is one person, based on the questions that were asked, who believes she has some of the answers, who would like to testify, and it's Sarah Pearson. It's the daughter of Ms. Benoit and Mr. Pearson.
Okay.
Good evening. Obviously, this is difficult because it's both my parents, I don't want to be in the middle of anything. I'm here for the dog. That dog was protecting himself, there's more going on between my parents. And the police know this? There's always been a problem there, they argue, again, they're not married, they've never been married. So the way they speak to each other at home and the way this dog hears it, he's protecting himself and my father because he doesn't know any better. He's now been home, and now he's confused because he's seeing all the arguments and the way my dad speaks to my mother and the way my mother speaks to him. So that's really not fair on the dog. That's all I'm going to say there.
Do you have too many questions?
No, I, I'm confused as to our responsibility inside the house anyway to determine the dangerousness of the dog.
Well, let's just hear the.
Well, I'm asking town council.
Well, if, you take a look at the outline that I had sent you.
I read it.
If you designate the dog as dangerous, you have a lot of, you have seven different options. The seventh obviously being euthanization, but the other six could be collectively ordered. So you could order that the dog, you know, remain in the house, and if he's, if he's ever taken off of the property, there would be a three-foot leash, a muzzle. If he's out in the backyard, there would be a pen. There's a requirement, or you can order a requirement that they apply for liability insurance through their homeowner's policy. So, yeah, if you, if you do an order, it would certainly impact and affect how the dog is kept in the home. And in the yard, and in the public.
So I figured I'd go through the board, ask any questions, and then we'll talk about what our options are. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, I just didn't really know what the Board of Selectmen are doing inside people's homes.
Yeah, well, we're going to get clarification on that.
That makes sense to me.
Jay, do you have any questions?
I have a question for Mr. Pearson, two questions.
Come on up, Mr. Pearson.
When she was having a problem with the dog, was your response to tell her to get into the bathroom? Is that, is that true?
Was that my response?
Yes.
Actually, my first response was, she asked me to get him off of her, and I jumped up and not thinking, I grabbed him by the collar, and I pulled him real hard, which I feel like I caused more damage. I didn't know the proper way of removing a dog when he was biting somebody. And that is to grab the rear legs and move them, so he throws him off balance, he'll let go, and I didn't know that. Or another way is to push the head into the, into the body or the bite. I, I've learned a lot since, since I got this dog.
Okay, that's it for now, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dana?
Mr. Pearson, I'm right here.
Come on up again.
Do you take any responsibility for this event?
Of course I do. I needed a dog and I, and I got one. And as far as I'm concerned, I own him, Mona does not care to have him. And we've decided, or I've decided, I left the house and moved into my, my other house with a dog. And that's where I'll be living.
I believe dogs are set up for either failure or success. And I believe that you set your dog up for failure. I, I don't believe, you've admitted here that you had the knowledge when you got this dog to set it up for success. And, and I personally think that, that that is a problem that you need to hang on to and, and take ownership of that issue. And then my, my other, my other question would be, how are you and Mona going to, how are you going to? Let's just assume the dog stays with you back in your home. How are you going to work out the living relationship with Mona?
That hasn't been decided yet. We have problems, and I won't bring them up here.
I don't want to get into that.
This is not divorce court, I understand.
But it's going to be difficult for me personally to make a decision on this, unless you have figured that out.
Figured, figured what out?
How, how you and Mona are going to, are going to, are you going to continue to cohabitat? Are you going to, are the two, are you going to get back together in the same home with this same dog?
That's doubtful.
Okay.
That's doubtful. It's doubtful.
That's all I have, thank you.
You're welcome.
I actually have a question too, Mr. Pearson. I'm sorry, before you sit down again. I believe I just heard, and I heard the witness testify, that you had, you both are living in separate?
Houses.
Houses, right now.
Yeah.
What's the physical distance between the two homes?
Two hundred and fifty feet, approximately.
So you're, you're living two hundred and fifty feet away from each other? Is the dog, the dog currently is not let out at all, correct? He stays with you unless he's on a leash or muzzled?
I put him on a dog run, a trolley, zip line, which is, it's an extreme heavy duty one that I specially ordered. And I walk him at least two times a day, a mile and a half at a time. And as you heard, I take him to training, and I do my homework with him.
Is the dog crated at all while he's in the home?
Yep.
How often, how long of a time period is he crated?
At nighttime, all night.
He's crated overnight?
He's, he's crated at night. If I have to leave the house and I can't take him somewhere, I'll put him in the crate, so.
Kind of along that?
It's not more than an hour or two.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mike, what's next?
If nobody has anything else to provide to the board, you would just close the open hearing, close the open part of the hearing?
Yeah.
Jerry?
There are no neighbors here, are there, are there any neighbors?
Did you want to come up and add something to the?
I don't really have to come up here, but I can tell you that.
Actually, yeah, you kind of need to be recorded, I'm sorry.
My name's Carol Hollis. I am about three houses down from Jim Pearson, and I met the dog before this incident. And it's quite a loving dog, I, I love animals and I love dogs. And I could sense right away, and when I was starting pouting, it would rub its head against my leg, like, I love you. And to me, that's enough, that's all I need. And when it got its muzzle, I still talk to him every day. I've never seen any aggression in the dog. And Jim's doing a great job.
You're not afraid of?
No, no, not at all.
Seeing him, okay.
Thank you for speaking to us.
Sure.
Is there anyone else here? Leslie?
I'm not a neighbor, but my friend lived in the house that Mr. Pearson is now living in. And I heard quite a bit of history about his past performances.
Yes, please.
The question was, are there any neighbors here? And she said she's not a neighbor, and she has no eyewitness direct testimony to offer.
Yeah, you're right, it is hearsay, I will say that. I will say one more thing, and then I'll sit down. I do not understand why a dog is getting preference over a person who has been violated in such a degree. That's my opinion, I'm an absolute, to the core, animal lover. But this is, does not set with me very well, and once, I don't care if, the people that have the training, one of the, what is it?
K-9 good citizen?
No.
Schutzen.
Schutzen.
Yes.
It's a German form of training.
Training, structure, and obedience.
Which was originally, was originated as a form of training dogs for protection and?
Protection, obedience, and tracking.
Not loving.
No, no, that's not.
I, I, you know what, I've seen a couple of the dogs trained in the same way, and they, they.
Nope, I have to. If we get to. The only, the only people that should be presenting anything to the board are direct witnesses, is if there was, this is essentially a small trial. So it's not really a forum for somebody to just get up and give their opinion.
Yeah, so I think.
Schutzen is dog sport.
Okay, thank you, we're not, yeah, we're not going to entertain anything that was just said to us, okay. Are there any other neighbors here? Anybody else that has a direct, you know, have the direct witness of this? Okay, so on that, on that note, I think I'm going to entertain a motion to close, I guess, the public hearing part of this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mike, what's next?
So the way I usually advise boards to proceed here is, you basically have to take, make two different decisions tonight. So I always advise everybody to take two separate votes. So under the statute, and if you take a look at the outline, after hearing all the evidence, you're going to decide tonight whether or not Epic is a dangerous dog, a nuisance dog, or neither. If you take a look at page two of the outline, under 136A, you'll see 3A. The statutory definition of a dangerous dog is, one, that, quote, "without justification attacks a person or domestic animal causing physical injury or death," or, two, behaves in a manner that a reasonable person believes poses an unjustified threat of physical injury or death. So that's the definition of the dangerous dog. There's a secondary definition of a nuisance dog, and that's on page three, it's the very first paragraph. That, that one, nuisance dog under 136A is one that, quote, "by excessive barking or other disturbance is a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity," or, two, "by excessive barking causes damage or other interference, a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment, or, three, has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal, or a person, but such threat or attack was not grossly disproportionate reaction under all these circumstances." So you're going to, in the first vote, you would determine whether or not the dog's dangerous, as defined under 136A, a nuisance dog, or neither. And then once you kind of make that decision, there's a secondary vote for what the remedies are, or conditions we're going to impose.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to determine whether this dog is, in fact, a dangerous dog. Do I get a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, let's discuss it. Under this, under this guidance that we have here from town council, a nuisance dog, I don't believe that this dog fits this. I don't believe there's excessive barking. I don't think there's annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity. I don't think that by excessive barking, there's causing damage or other interference. That a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet, there's, there's been no comment about the dog being loud and barking. And he hasn't threatened any livestock or domestic animal, or even a person threatened it, not grossly disproportionate. I mean, this dog actually bit, so. I mean, I'll ask, I'll go through the board, do you think this dog is a nuisance?
I do not.
Yeah?
I feel it's a dangerous dog.
Jerry?
It's not a nuisance, no?
Think it's a nuisance? Yeah, I don't believe so either. Okay, so the next thing is it's a dan, it's a dan, it's a dangerous dog, so. Section 136A defines dangerous dog as one that would either, without justification, attack a person or domestic animal causing physical injury or death, I believe that occurred. Behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified threat of physical injury or death to a person to a domestic or owned animal. I don't believe that it is going to, maybe it won't cause, well, actually, physically to a person or to a domestic. So, yeah, I think this dog fits that category. But then it goes on, and it clarifies that it has to also provide that no dog shall be deemed da, dangerous. One, solely based upon growling or barking. We're not basing our, oh, I'm not basing my decision on that. Based upon the breed of the dog, no. If the dog was reacting to another animal or to a person and the dog's reaction was not grossly disproportionate to any of the following circumstances. One, the dog was protecting or defending itself, its offspring, or another domestic animal or a person from an attack or assault. I don't believe that occurred. Uh, the person who was attacked or threatened by the dog was committing a crime upon the person's property of the owner or keeper of the dog. I don't believe that occurred. The person attacked or threatened by the dog was engaged in teasing, tormenting, battering, assaulting, injuring, or otherwise provoking the dog. I don't believe that occurred. At the time of the attack or threat, the person or animal that was attacked or threatened by the dog had breached an enclosure or structure in which the dog was kept apart from the public and such person or animal was not authorized by the owner of the premise to be within such enclosure, including but not limited to a gated fenced-in area. If the gate was closed, whether locked or unlocked, provided however that if a person is under the age of seven, it shall be a rebuttable presumption that the person was not committing a crime provoking the dog or trespassing. So I don't believe that occurred. So I think based on this criteria, I'm comfortable with this dog being dan- deemed a dangerous dog. Any comment from the board?
My comment would be, I think this is the only time in my life that I haven't had a dog. I've had dogs all my life. I've had some marvelous dogs, I've had some good dogs, and I had a couple of really, lots of good dogs. This is hard to me. I mean, this was a very tumultuous process that we went through tonight. Hearing very dissimilar statements from a lot of people. I've had, like I say, a lot of dogs. I've had dogs that have been aggressive in certain circumstances to the max. And they were Labradors. So, I'm confused by one thing. A dog that bites someone and bites someone severely is dangerous. Did Jim exasperate the bite by pulling him off? Maybe. But the dog bit someone. Is the dog now, after some training, going to be extremely dangerous? Maybe. We've heard from a lot of people that say the dog, including the daughter, is not dangerous, but a victim of some of the circumstances of an early dog in a house. And I'm not opting for dogs over people, honest. So I'm very confused. I don't like any of this. I mean, if it makes for me the ability for Jim to have to muzzle the dog and put him on a leash for the time being to see how the dog continues to behave, I'm fine with that too. And if it takes the definition of a dangerous dog to do that, I'll probably be okay with that also. But it seems to me the dog was thrown into a situation where the guy never had a chance anyway. So, who knows?
Any other comments?
Yeah. One word I didn't yet mention tonight was dominance. I've worked with large animals since I was a child. I grew up on a farm. A lot of times, animals don't necessarily want to kill you or injure you. They just want to exert their dominance. They will look for the smallest person in the group. And, you know, roughness pushing down to the ground, those are always to show dominance. And, you know, what I've seen over my life is, once that genie is out of the bottle, it's very difficult to put in. It's not, it, it can't be, it isn't necessarily just a case of the animal doesn't like that person, or it doesn't like the object that person's holding in its hand. Animals are smart, and they can figure out who they can exert dominance over. And, and that's what alarms me in this situation. You know, there's no moment more terrifying as a human than when a cow tries to mount you. And it's not a sexual move, it's a dominant move. It's to exert dominance. And once an animal gets a taste of that, it's so hard to put the, the genie back in the bottle. That being said, the situation, the dog's been in, um, taken in all input, is questionable. I have a hard time sentencing any animal to death. But I think I would have a real hard time allowing that dog off of the property at all after it has bit two people, not just one, from, I haven't heard that disputed. And really, to do it right, you would need a ten-foot fence. So there is absolutely no way it can go up and over. And the fence really would need to be sixteen inches underground, so it would take a while to dig under it.
Actually, I think the law says, dates something differently. It has to have dog run, two feet under it.
Cause they'll dig.
It's got to have a kennel, it's got to have a roof, a chain link and top of it. Dana, do you have any comment before we vote on the dog being dangerous?
No. Not other than what I've already said.
Jerry?
Yeah, um, I, I guess, my feeling is that, that the, the dog probably was protecting Mr. Pearson. But I think the, the dog's reaction was grossly disproportionate to what Ms. Benoit was doing. And, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that the dog was only there for two weeks, but I think, I, I, I guess the dog overreacted and, and, and that's, that's dangerous. And maybe with the training, he, he'll never overreact again.
Good point.
We're all, we're all, we're all just about at the same place.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Julie, can you read the motion back?
Yeah, it was to determine if the dog was a dangerous dog.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. The dog has been deemed dangerous. Okay, Mike, now what?
All right, so if you take a look at page three, I kind of do this at every one of these hearings. It's, it's a little frustrating the way that statute's written, because you want to order a lot of different things. First of all, order somebody to have their dog undergo training. You can't do that. The statute and the legis- the, the language of the statute, in the statute, gives you seven options. And if you take a look at the fourth page, number seven is that the dog be humanely euthanized. Obviously, that precludes the need of going into anything else. The other six, one through six, could all be ordered together, or you can just kind of pick them out, à la carte. If you take a look at it, and I know it's pretty lengthy here, but just to kind of paraphrase, you know, one, that the dog be humanely restrained, two, that the dog always be kept in house, or if he's brought outside, confined, confined in a pen. Three, that the dog have a muzzle in a three-foot chain, no longer than a three-foot chain when taking off, taken off of the property. Four is the, you know, required that they apply for a hundred thousand dollars in liability insurance to their homeowner's policy. Five, which is kind of a nebulous one, it's just that they're required to provide proof of identification of the dog to the animal control office, you know, officer. And six, that the dog be spayed or neutered. I think the dog's already been in this case, so. So essentially, it's, it's seven or any combination of one through six. And you know, you really can't go off script, unfortunately. What we usually do, if, if the board doesn't order euthanization, they always put something in the decision saying, you know, "we hope that the dog continues to undergo training," though for some reason, and I, and it's a fault of the statute, the legislature really should amend it, you can't order it.
What about a fence?
Yes, there, that would be two. Well, there would be a, it would be a pen in the backyard. And it would have to be approved by the building inspector and the animal control officer.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So. Yes, Jerry?
If, if we're talking about a pen, is there enough room on your property where you're going to be living, or where you choose to live, Mr. Pearson?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Yes, please. I already stated to Jim that I'm not going to allow a fence to be put up on our property.
I don't, okay. All right, so what are we thinking? Do we like one? I think so. Yeah. I think one's a definite yes. How about two?
I just, wanted to just clarify so people listening know.
Okay, so one says the dog, uh, the dog be, it must enter one of the following orders. So this order would be that the dog be humanely restrained, provided however that no order shall provide that a dog deemed dangerous be chained, tethered, or otherwise tied to an inanimate object, including but not limited to a tree post or building. So the dog cannot be tied or chained outside. Uh, I question whether a run will adhere to this?
Honestly, that's another one that really doesn't make a lot of sense to me, because two kind of covers it. One, I think, is just a really fancy way of saying, "don't let the dog run free."
Okay. And if you walk, if you're walking it, it has to be on a leash?
Yeah, uh, two go, two gets into, um, you know, the, the pen, three gets into the leash.
Okay, so let's look at two. That the dog be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog, provided however that confined shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run area upon the premises of the owner or keeper, provided further that such pen or dog run shall have a secure roof, and if such enclosure has no floor, secured to the sides thereof, the side shall be embedded into the ground for not less than two feet. And provided further that within the confines of such a pen or dog run, a doghouse or proper shelter from the elements shall be provided to protect the dog. So this will direct Mr. Pearson to build a, a dog run in his backyard.
Right, but just, but not your regular dog run, which is just a leash from one tree to another that you clip the dog on and the dog runs. It has to be a, a building or confined.
Yes, they say a, a locked pen or run area, um, that such pen or run shall have a secure roof, embedded into the ground two feet.
So a zip line's not going to do it?
No.
No, no. So in my mind, I envision this as, you know, happy if you have a kennel, the dog, you see them, put them in the dog runs.
They're long.
And it has a roof over it and either a floor, it goes into the ground.
Read, um, securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run area. I mean, can that be interpreted to believe that the dog run would be in an enclosed area?
Uh, yeah, if you go a couple more sentences, they, uh, they define, the pen or the dog run shall have a secure roof.
What about walls?
Yes, and the side shall be embedded into the ground not less than two feet.
So the other part of this that I have a question on, it says, confined shall mean securely confined indoors. Okay? So that means if Mr. Pearson chooses, he can keep the dog indoors with him at a separate location from Ms. Benoit. But my concern is, what if somebody comes to the house?
Is it, would it be within our authority to, um, condition that a, some type of warning sign be placed at the property? To, in case unsuspecting delivery people or someone that just walks in the door?
That would probably be one of those, we, you know, we advise you to, to, you know, put a sign, warning. Uh, one of the things here is they have two separate properties. I think one of your conditions would be that he has to stay in the rental property so that Ms. Benoit is always away from the dog in a separate.
Right.
I'm worried about other people.
I have a question. Is, do both of you own both properties? Are you both on the deeds?
Yes.
You, on both properties?
Yes.
And Ms. Benoit, you have said that you are not, not going to allow a pen in the backyard at either of these properties?
That is correct.
So how, I, I don't understand how we can even apply number two if that's the case.
Mike?
This is definitely a unique situation, but 157H, uh, there's criminal penalties for failure to abide by your order, so if there's some sort of.
Can you explain that to the board?
Yeah, once, once you issue an order, it has the weight of the law, uh, well, they have the right to appeal, obviously, to the district court. But if the, uh, the order becomes final and somebody doesn't abide by any of the provisions of the order, they can be charged criminally prosecuted. So, Mr. Pearson and Ms. Benoit will have to work something out because they can't just unilaterally ignore your order.
If we choose to include one, reference to number two?
Yes.
Excuse me, how long does he have to do this?
Um, well, the, as long as the dog's kept inside, uh, the pen can take, I guess, as much time as it takes to construct. And then, like I mentioned, it has to be approved by the animal control officer and the building inspector. You know, this isn't realistic, but under two, they technically could just never build a pen and keep the dog in the house forever. Never let him out. Obviously, it's not a realistic option, so.
Would be never let him out unless he's tethered.
No, at least.
At three feet.
Yeah, you, yeah, yeah, when I mean, yeah, never let him out, like, just never let him out in the yard.
And that's only on, like, a body, like a person. He can't be tethered to a fixed object outside. He's got to be in control. Right. Three-foot leash.
So. Want to talk about number three? That when removed from the premises, the owner or the premises of the person keeping the dog, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or other tethering device having a minimum tensile strength of three hundred pounds and not exceeding three feet in length. So I think we can put that one into place, because that just says every time Mr., um, Pearson takes the dog out. I mean, let's face it, the dog's going to have to go to the vet. He's going to have to go, you know, he's going to have to leave the house. He's just going to be on this leash in, in a muzzle. We can put the muzzle order on him, that the dog's muzzled when he comes out of the house. And that he has a leash on him. And that would be if we decided to go to, and, and go the route of the dog run in the backyard, he would have to be muzzled and leashed from the house to the dog run and back, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. How about number four, insurance? How do we feel about insurance? Ensuring the owner or keeper, bless. The owner or keeper against any claim loss, damage, or injury of persons.
I don't see where that helps the situation.
Yeah.
I, I do.
Okay, please.
If the, if the dog bites a stranger and the strange, the stranger gets damages, there'll, there'll be a lawsuit. And I don't think Mr. Pearson wants to cover the damages. That's why you have insurance.
And how about the town? Could the town be liable for that, or no?
No, the, the town wouldn't be liable. So they, one of the reasons for part four is, uh, if your dog bites somebody, your homeowner's policy usually covers it. Once a dog's been deemed dangerous, you, you have to put, or you're supposed to put your homeowner's on, on notice, because they may not cover you. So this is one of those requirements, that they would have to apply for the hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
That way, you know, somebody gets bit in the future, they can't, you know, the homeowner's policy, hey, it goes, you can't tell the victim, hey, tough luck. You know, they never told us that the dog was dangerous.
Okay. And number five, well, number five is the keeper of the dog provide the licensing authority of animal control, uh, identified order for which a dog may identify. So I think he had, he's microchipped, correct? The dog is microchipped?
Microchipped, right.
He is a microchip, okay. Does the police, does the animal control officer have that information, the microchip information?
He's licensed, then, yeah, he's all legitimate, that way.
And then number six is unless an owner or keeper of the dog provides evidence that a veterinarian, oh, he's already fixed. We've already got that one.
Yeah.
And then the last one is that the da- dog can be humanely euthanized. We want to discuss that one. Does anybody feel that's appropriate at this point?
Not at this point, but I, I think it's, that's strike three.
That's how you feel? Dana?
Yeah, I, I, I have a rough time with that one.
Yeah, I, I likewise have a difficult time.
Jeff?
Same.
As do I.
Okay, so number seven is off the list. Okay, so what do we want to do to ensure that this dog doesn't attack again? As a board. Jerry, do you want to start?
Well, I, I would suggest that we include an order with, uh, numeral one, two, three, four. Um, and you said earlier that we cannot include, um, an order that he continue training the dog? That's not appropriate?
Uh, no, I mean, the, the wording in the statute doesn't allow it, but every board always includes that.
That is a good thing.
Or, i- i- in every case with it, where a dog is undergoing training, every board always encourages, you know, ongoing training.
Perhaps language to the, to the point we advise, continue training? Is that appropriate?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Would it be within the board's authority to condition that the pen or fenced-in area comes right up to a door of the house that's used for access to that area so there's no chance of the dog breaking away in between the pen and the house?
Oh.
I, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I think the, the one issue with that-
I ask counsel.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't know if this, I don't know if this statute gives you that much leeway or, or ability to, uh, order it. The, the other concern I guess I would have too is, um, if they have a septic system or something there where they, you know, all of a sudden they can't construct something there because-
I guess that, I mean, the, the concern to me is the dog is gonna be really outside of a protective enclosure between the house and the pen how many times a day? Every day.
Wouldn't that, your scenario, be a conflict if the house went on fire? Help, we're stuck in a pen?
Depends how many doors it has. A lot of people have fenced in, you know, it doesn't mean you can't have a gate to get out of.
Okay. Dana, what was your?
I actually think that it would be a safer situation if the pen was separate from the house because the door, when you open the door to the house, it, it, he would not be, you know, he wouldn't have to have the dog muzzled and leashed between the pen and the house, which I think it would actually be a safer situation if, if the, if he were to go out to the pen on his own, muzzle the dog, leash the dog, and then bring the dog into the house. It's probably a safer situation than having the dog be able, I mean, when, when you start, when you start talking about territorial places and protection, you know, the dog, the dog, you know, his pen is gonna be his pen. That is gonna be his place. And when you, when you mix that with the home, and you guys can correct me, you're professionals.
Your, your training takes care of the territorialism.
Okay.
If a train, if a stranger walks into a pen, yeah, all bets are off. It's just like a stranger walking into the house, but attached-
So it doesn't matter?
No.
Okay.
No, it's, it's the training that he's supposed to be getting to understand, okay, if somebody, he's, the dog's in the pen and somebody walks in that Mr. Pearson doesn't know and the dog doesn't know, it, it, the dog is going to react, any dog would. But, I mean, taking the dog to the pen on a leash with a muzzle, closing the door, taking everything off, coming back out, the dog is in a five by ten run. Five feet by ten, they have their own, I have them. It's a run, it's not a, it's like a pen in a run.
Right.
It's, it's actually a fence, you know, but it's enclosed and it has top, bottom, whatever.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Um, I'm still concerned about the fact that both incidents involve the dog getting up on people, which it would still be able to do if it got away from somebody, muzzle or no muzzle.
So, Mr. Kenefik, what happens if we put an order in place and we, we ordered the, the leash and the muzzle and the dog gets away and attacks him?
Uh, you would have two different things. Uh, the dog would be, uh, subject to immediate seizure because it, there's a violation. And then you would have a secondary hearing, uh, here, basically the same thing. And I think at that point, euthanization would probably be, uh, sit very much on the table.
So if, if we put these, what I just heard, if we put these things into place, and I still think we should order number five because he's microchipped, but if he leaves town or something else, although, does this only pertain to us? I mean, in the town of Newbury?
Uh, no, the order fol- as long as his dog's in Massachusetts, the order follows him.
Okay. So, um, I think we should put number five in, but, um, if for some reason this dog attacks again because it doesn't follow the order, the dog will be seized and then we'll have to, it'll come back here, if he's still in Newbury, and we'll have to make a decision on what to do with the dog.
So then again, on the other end, when the dog's like 10 years old, is he still dangerous? And, I mean, do you readdress dangerous dogs?
Uh, yeah, I mean, this, this is pretty much-
And it's kind of funny too, like, Mr. Pearson, I'm not saying we're older, but, you know, younger people can run faster after dogs that get away and stuff like this. So, I mean, but dogs that are older don't run as fast. So, I mean, when does, do dogs get a second chance in court? And I'm not saying this dog should.
Like an appeal?
No, like-
I mean, is he a dangerous dog for the rest of his days?
Like a parole?
And on a muzzle and in a, in a pen? I mean, I don't know, what happens next?
Well, I actually have a unique situation in Ashland where somebody's filing a petition to rescind. Uh, and it's been, I think, like 10 years. And, uh, the board, the, the town actually called and asked and I looked into it. I, and I found that the board could eventually reconsider.
So dangerous dog follows a dog, really, for the rest of his life unless something's done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thoughts, concerns? Okay. So I guess I'll entertain a motion. So I'll entertain a motion to list the remedies that we're going to order to be provided for epic. We don't have a motion that's easy to read, right?
I usually just say, you can, uh, you can say C, one, two, three, and four. Uh, 175, C, one, two, three, and four.
Okay.
And, uh, one of the other things, it, it, whoever makes the motion, you would want to include that, that the dog is going to be confined to the rental home.
Mr. Pearson, what is the address of your home where you're currently residing with the dog?
Thirty-six Cottage Road.
On number two, add, add it after the first phrase to the, that the dog be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog at 36.
Jerry, would you mind reading the motions?
Um, okay, uh, so we, the, the, I move that the, um, board vote to, um, order that the, find the, after finding the dog is dangerous, the board, um, enters the following orders in accordance with general law, chapter 140, section 157C. One, that the dog be humanely restrained, provided however that no order shall provide that a dog deemed da- dangerous be chained, tethered, or otherwise tied to an inanimate object, including but not limited to a tree, post, or building. Number two, that the dog be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog at 36 Cottage Road, Newbury. However, that confined shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run area upon the premises of the owner or keeper, provided further that such pen or dog run shall have a secure roof and if such enclosure has no floor, secured to the sides thereof, the sides shall be embedded into the ground for it, uh, for not less than two feet and provided further that within the confines of such pen or dog run, a doghouse or proper shelter from the elements shall be provided to protect the dog. Number three, that when removed from the premises of the owner or the premises of the person keeping the dog, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or other tethering device within a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds and not exceeding three feet in length. Four, that the owner or keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance in an amount of not less than a hundred thousand dollars, ensuring the owner or keeper against any loss, claim, damage, or injury to persons, domestic animals, or property resulting from the acts, whether intentional or unintentional, of the dog, or proof that reasonable efforts were made to obtain such insurance if a policy has not been issued. Provided however that if a policy of insurance has been issued, the owner or keeper shall produce such policy upon request of the hearing authority or a justice of the district court and provided further that if a policy has not been issued, the owner or keeper shall provide proof of efforts to obtain such insurance. Um, okay. And I think that's it, un- unless you want number five about the chip.
Um, maybe we, do you want to keep? I think we should add number five in case the dog leaves the town of Newbury because the, if the animal control officer in Newbury has it, doesn't mean that's, if this is gonna follow him throughout the Commonwealth, if he moves to another town, then I think the license, they should be providing this information to the licensing authority of that town. What, do you agree?
Okay. Um, okay, uh, that, that the owner, number five, that the owner or keeper of the dog provide to the licensing authority or animal control officer or other entity identified in the order information by which a dog may be identified throughout its lifetime, including but not limited to photographs, videos, veterinary examination, tattooing, or microchip implantations, or a combination of any such methods of identification.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
That's probably within our rights only in Massachusetts.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, Mike? It's only within the Commonwealth, right?
Yeah, you have no, if the dog ends up in Connecticut or Rhode Island or-
New Hampshire.
New Hampshire, that you have no jurisdiction over or out of state.
I'm still concerned about the transition from the house to the enclosure.
Yeah, well, it has to be muzzled and all this stuff. Or, or else, now, Mr., uh, you'd have to understand, Mr. Pearson, if for some reason the dog gets out when you're taking him to the, to the kennel out in your yard, and he's not muzzled, the dog will be seized and he'll probably get euthanized. So it's in your, it's your utmost responsibility to this animal that that does not happen. Anything else? All in favor?
Did you want to add to that motion besides the one, two, three, four, and five? The, um, advice to continue training and confined to 365?
Should we do that?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Or take that as a separate motion?
Don't we want it in the order?
Yeah, it would be in the order. I mean, you could-
Okay, so we want to include, it is our hope that the dog continues his training.
The dog and owner continue behavior.
The dog and the owner continue their training.
Recommend.
Anything else? Do you need to-
I, I really recommend a shoe or something between the house and the enclosure.
Come on.
Um...
Jesus Christ.
Excuse me, excuse me, okay? If you interrupt again, I'm gonna ask you to leave. Thank you, this is a board discussing.
My reasoning is you're outside. Mr. Pearson's an older gentleman. The dog looks like it's a substantial dog. How do you open the gate to the enclosure? You take one hand, so then you're holding them with one hand and you're fooling with the lock. That's when your problem happens. That's when your problem happens.
Madam Chair, I, I have a question actually for counsel. The, um, the... Number three. The tethering device, is that what we call a body, a body leash?
Like a harness, you mean?
Right, 'cause, I mean, we've, we've had other dog hearings here where we have, the owner had to wear a body, a body tethered device, where, which would kind of help out that situation where he doesn't have to hang on to the leash with either hand 'cause the dog is attached to his waist. And I'm just, and my question is for you. Is, is that what they're talking about? That, that type of device? 'Cause I know they exist.
If they're tethered to the point where the dog can drag him down the street on his face, I can live with that.
That's, that's, exactly, that, that's-
I always have to step up the professionalism on this end about talking about him falling by his face. Let's, let's, let's raise the level of professionalism here.
We are, this is thoughtfulness to keep this from happening again.
Okay, but you're way off here, out of bounds.
No, I'm not.
As far as a body tether, that is not something- The fact that you keep responding to me shows how, your lack of professionalism. So there's a question on the fourth. The, this body tether, so that it be attached to him as he's going in and out. I mean, I, I don't think the three species of that in, in the hearings I've had, we haven't had that. But, um, the purpose again is to, so if he's got one hand on the fence, right, and one hand on the dog, so the dog-
I, I, it's just a question that I have, whether or not that this is, is, is directing a body, body tether or not. That, that's all, that's my question.
That, it would address, a body tether would address my concerns.
I've never, I've never had that before. I mean, it, it says restrain with a chain or other tethering device. So, I mean, I, I always interpreted that as, um, you know, a lea- a minimum of a leash with 300 pounds, uh, strength of 300 pounds.
Dana, you've, you've seen one of those devices?
I have.
All right, I have it.
Could, could I just offer?
No, the public hearing's closed.
It, it was all for questions.
Alicia? Well, interest, point of interest, town council and maybe having to ask someone else, but what kind of collars on the dog? There's a myriad of collars that have a larger effect and a smaller effect on a strong dog.
Well, I think it-
Does it go to, do they talk about that?
In the body of the evidence, the dog was wearing a pinch collar.
No.
Pinch collar.
He's on a prong collar.
Okay.
Prong training collar.
Yep, yep, I got you. Which is good.
So I think what I'm hearing from you guys is you want him on harness.
I would, I would like that. And it could potentially save the dog's life 'cause if the dog breaks away, knocks someone down, then we're back here talking about potentially euthanizing the dog. I want to avoid that. It protects everyone involved. A simple harness, you can put on, click, click, over we go, we can't get apart.
Um, does it, it, it- Attached to the owner's body?
Yes. It's, it's similar to, like, for example, a roofer where's a safety harness that's attached to, so if he falls off the roof, he doesn't go all the way to the ground. That, that's, that's what this thing is sort of like.
I, I have visions of, of someone on, on steady land, uh, ground, falling and, and, and being pulled by the dog because it's a strong, uh, dog. That's the concern that I, that I have.
Yeah, that's kind of my concern, I share that concern.
Let me, let me just one more time ask, and I suppose if the dog's agitated, but if I understand these collars, and maybe I need to have more understanding of these collars, but they're really not comfortable on a dog if they're pulled. And that's why they put the collar on a dog that might need to be, you know, the star, the, I, I could be dead wrong, cor- correct, but it cut, you know, it was in their throat.
It's a pinch collar, right, it's a training collar.
Right, they're tough. You don't want to be yanked around by one of those.
Come on up.
Thank you.
If it's clarifying, it's, it's information.
It's clarification, it's all due respect. It's a prong collar, it's a-
It's the most natural form of protection. It mimics a mother's bite. And it's the ones that they hook in. So the dog is actually correcting themselves. As they pull forward, it's equalized pressure around the neck. And the dog stops and will step back. I understand what you guys are saying about a harness. But a harness actually promotes pulling because right here is the dog's strongest muscle. And as it feels pressure right here, the dog will dig in.
The harness isn't on the dog.
On the person.
The harness is on the human.
Yeah.
It's not on the dog.
So leash.
They're talking like the waist leash.
And attaching the dog to the person.
Right.
So you could actually have that waist leash connected to the prong collar.
I want to protect people and the animals.
And the prong collar is, the prong collar is the perfect way to do that.
Click it to the belt, so one free hand holding on and whatever.
That way even if you're tripping, set down, the dog pulls, the leash does that.
Okay, so if you have one, thank you.
Yeah, no, I have a leash that goes around my waist, connected to the dog, I'm holding, and I'm doing this. Yes. But I understand, the only issue this dog has is in the house in protection. He hasn't been attacking people outside.
But the best way to move it from the house to the pen would be that waist with the prong collar. Because as soon as it starts to pull, that prong collar would give the equalized pressure and it would stop any forward motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have any statutory authority to order the owner to wear. Three is only pertaining to the dog itself.
Would the dog owner be willing to use that type of leash? That would satisfy me.
All right. Any further questions or comment? Yeah, you thinking?
No, I'm good.
You good? Jay?
You're probably going to reclarify this, but we're voting on one through five.
One through five, and we're going to.
Jerry's already read them all.
Yeah, that's the motion on the table. We're discussing that. And actually, we're going to add additional comment to, what is that?
To recommend the dog and person to continue with the training, to confine the dog to the 36 Cottage Road. And then were we going to add the body harness? I don't know if we can add that or not.
I don't, he has volunteered to do that. I don't think it's, council has advised us that it's, you know, we can't make him do that, so I guess.
Okay, so those would be the two additions to the remedies.
Are we comfortable with that, Board? Dana, JR, Jeff, the council with that? Jerry? Okay. All right. In that case, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the conditions of the motion on the table as read? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Okay, motion passes.
Just before we finish, just so you know, Alex and I will put together a decision, a written decision, send it over to Tracy in a few days. She can sign it. Usually I can send it to attorney Cohen. But we'll have a written decision for you in a couple of days.
Okay. No, we already closed the public hearing earlier. I think we're good. Does anybody want to take a break? While we get back? I'm going to just recess the board for a few minutes. We can come back in five.
Good to see you, Alex.
I'm going to.
Where are we, Alicia?
I'm going to take this Carnova LLC Douglas Machado of 86 Newbury Port Turnpike, buy and sell secondhand vehicles, a new business license. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
And I second it.
Okay, so.
Who is the person?
Right here. And would you like to tell us about your business, sir? Because you're on TV.
First of all, my name's Pasco Zelli. I'm a consultant for Carnova. This is Doug Machado. He's been in the car business for decades. This is his son, who he's bringing up in the business, who will be managing the store on a day-to-day basis. Here's Mr. Machado.
Hello, how are you? So I'm doing this for about 25 years. I worked for a company right now called AutoMax for four years. My son and I, we opened a dealership in Haver about year and a half ago. And we just opened a new location now. We got the building that you know. We redo the whole building, looks really good. And he's doing a phenomenal job. He just graduated high school last year. And so we are trying to bring a good business to this beautiful town, Newbury.
Well, thank you. Where is your, what's the address of your business? Just so the people will know.
86 Newbury Port Turnpike in Newbury.
Okay.
Was it, no, what building is that? Just was it a dealership there before, right?
Yes, yes.
Good, good.
Long time ago, yes.
Good. About this place.
Right next to the building, they have the, they fix the old Mercedes. When you drive there, you see a lot of Mercedes parking in there.
So, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
We wish you the best of luck.
Okay.
We like new businesses coming to town. And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Thank you for hanging in there through that whole thing. Okay, so I'm going to go back. The report of the chair, I did sign the VW 2223 Mini-Minpress Staples Select Board, then PR 20 through 23 for Julie, and then the PR 2223 again for the Select Board.
Motion to approve. Oh, sorry.
No, we don't, yeah, we don't have to approve those. Okay.
Long nights, hard calls.
Exactly.
Sounded good anyway.
So now we have grants, gifts, and donations. We have a 12-inch Purple Heart Town Road Sides, approximately $1,200 from Angelo Greck. Could I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I've seen these already around town. And that's wonderful, and.
Now, Madam Chair, before we move on, I think we could get Mr. Pugh in.
Oh, yeah, you're next, Greg. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now Greg. Let's take Mr. Pugh, which is on the top of your, page two of your agenda. We have a packed agenda. Mass State Lottery Commission notification, the Plum Island Beach Comma is getting Keno. Do you want to come up and talk about it a little bit? How are you?
Kathy Housey, I'm also one of the owners of Beach Comma.
Yes, how are you?
Good, thanks. Yeah, we're trying to just do whatever we can to bring in more money. That's to stay afloat, so I think we won't actually start it until the fall if it does get approved. But like I say, just trying to get more business.
Yep, well, good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So this was just a notification for us. I don't believe we have to do anything with this, do we? Do we?
We're actually on here for another, we're here for another reason. I didn't even know this one was on tonight.
Maybe do a vote that you're not disagreeing or whatever the wording is on the notice.
Okay, hold on, let me get that.
Because it does say that if you did.
Okay, so if the city or town objects to the issuance of the Keno license, it must claim its right to have a hearing before the MSLC within 21 days of receipt of this notice.
So maybe your vote to be not, you don't object type of thing. So just so we have a vote on record.
I move no objection.
Second.
Yeah, so we don't, we don't have to send a letter?
No, we don't have to. But I think it's good to have a vote on record just that we, the board did not object.
Okay.
As for the vote, Alicia.
So we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
No, they have something else. Want to take that?
Yeah, what else do you want?
We're looking for a Saturday afternoon music license for outside.
Yes, 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 yes.
At every beach party.
That is.
After the one-day liquor licenses.
It's right after. The last one-day liquor license. Right here, entertainment license. Yeah, I'll do that, thank you.
I'll make a motion so we can discuss.
Please do.
Second.
So the Plum Island Beach Comma has done this before. They have, you're going to have outdoor music. And it's going to be from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Saturday afternoons, correct? Yeah, we've never had any complaints about it. I think it's a wonderful addition. Entertained a motion. Will approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you can go home now.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Okay, so now let me go back to this. Anybody else here? Oh, Martha's still here. Poor Martha. All right, so. Let's go through this, these donations. We have a council on aging donation, $40 from Joe and Ollie Murphy.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Another one for $5 from Patricia Ann Walker.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
$500 from the Central Congregational Church.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then another one for $20 from Mary Gill.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And council, another one for $4 from Mary Ann Lee Fisk.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We've gone through our public hearings. We have an Eagle Scout Achievement Recognition for Nathan Yule.
Motion to write a letter of recognition to Nathan Yule.
Second.
This is similar to what we did in the past so that when they go and get their Eagle Scout, they collect letters from all different boards and committees, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Go for the glass of water.
All right. So now we have the 105 High Road Public Access Easement. Vote to authorize the Conservation Commission to accept easement as a gift. So, Mrs. Lynn, yeah, you have that motion. So let's go back here. So Martha's here.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion.
Well, let's wait for Jeff to come back with his water. Here.
Good day, Miss.
We're waiting for you.
Wow.
So Martha's going to come up and explain about this public access easement agreement that is needed for 105 High Road. Hi, Martha.
Hi.
Thank you for your patience.
You're welcome.
Had to wait till 10 for this.
Really? Martha Taylor, Newbury Planning Director. So this is a request that's in connection with the 105 High Road development that Mark DiPiero has done. So this is going to be, it's been approved as an open space residential development as a condominium with 10 units. One is the existing house that's up front, 105 High Road. And then nine other new units. As part of this, it's about 16, a little over 16-acre parcel. About 12 and a half acres are going to be retained as open space. And so this easement is basically, since it's all private property and access easement for the public to cross this property and park in the parking lot, which will have six spaces to access the open space.
Okay.
So it's really a two-step process. The Conservation Commission actually, under Chapter 40, Section 8C, can accept the easement as a gift, but only if the Select Board approves their doing so. So the first motion will be for you, if you so choose, to authorize a Conservation Commission to accept this as, the easement as a gift. And then they will need to vote to accept it on behalf of the town.
Martha, is this at the end of the street that is going to service those houses? Or is that not going to be, is that going to be a private?
So it's going to be a private way since it's a condominium.
I thought.
It's basically a driveway.
But are cars are still going to be able to go down that and go out the back piece?
So, well, the cars won't be able to. But there's a parking, I don't know if you can see this. But here's High Road down here. There's a cul-de-sac. And then a short drive between these two units and a little parking space here for six units. And then this will be the open space. So the first portion is meadow. And then it's all going to be woods in that back portion. It's two, you know, sort of two offset rectangles.
And that's going to be open to the public.
So that will be open to the public. And so the season grants the public the right to access it. And then there'll be a conservation restriction. The ownership of the open space will remain with the Condominium Association. But there will be a conservation restriction, which our Conservation Commission will be the holders of.
Any questions of Martha? Dana?
No.
JR? Jeff?
For my days on the plan aboard, these things sometimes don't work very well, but that's fine. Just because, you know, it is, it's like driving into a condominium-held, basic, private road and going down it and parking your car. But I mean, at least it's open space.
And walking your dog.
It's open space and, yeah, for, I think.
Coming down my road.
It's, it is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, people who live in the neighborhood, I can imagine walking your dog down there and then back. And there will be a trail that's going through that open wooded space. So.
Okay, Gary, do you have any questions?
And I believe you got the language for the motion.
Yep, JR's going to read it.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I move to authorize the Conservation Commission to accept as a gift an easement located through 105 High Road to the open space area containing 547,860,000 plus or minus square feet and owned by 105 Seagate LLC, a Massachusetts limited liability company with an address of 3 Graff Road, Unit 14, Newbury Port, Mass., 01950. And is shown on the plan entitled Seagate Condominium in Newbury, Mass., showing master site plan dated April 12, 2022, and prepared by North Point Survey Services Incorporated pursuant to General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8C. And further that the chair be authorized to execute any documents required to effectuate said gift.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, thank you, Martha. Great. So let's see. We did this. We did all that. We did this. We did that. We did this. Now we have a liquor license amendment for a pledge of collateral. So Julie has some information for the board on this, I believe, from the A B C C.
Right, so the, basically what the applicant is asking for is to use their liquor license as collateral to back a loan that they're gonna take out. So, um, the transaction, the party would be providing funds, whoever the party is providing the funds would have first access to acquire whatever is being pledged should the lo- the loan default.
I was hoping we would still have counsel at this point. I mean, basically, does that, am I understanding it the same as everyone else, that the, there would be some type of entanglement to the license should they go under, or should it be revoked?
The license is only good until the thirty-first of this year.
Tracy, do you know anything about-
We did run it by, um, Town Council, and they said it's a very common occurrence, that it does tie to the, the licenses you described.
So something happened to them, essentially somebody else would have control of that liquor license?
They'd have to come back, they'd have to petition for another license.
Transfer it to us.
Alright, so it's not automatic?
Uh-uh. So in here, it says the Corner Cupid is receiving a hundred and sixty thousand dollar bridge loan on the property they own, free and clear, located at one, at Four Hannover Street, Newbury, Mass., from O.S. Private Lending. So it's private lending, a commercial real estate bridge loan lender located in Natick, Mass. The property is worth approximately four hundred thousand. The lender is acquiring an additional lien on the liquor license. Corner Cupid refinanced into a long-term loan to re- to replay the bridge loan. So this is the bridge loan where they're gonna encumber the liquor license, and then they're gonna refinance it to a bigger thing. So.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Isn't the cupboard closed?
It seems to be.
I don't know.
I mean, may, uh, the lender, if, if it's, if it's a closed business anyway, the lender doesn't seem like they're real smart using, using the liquor license as collateral.
So there's more information down the bottom here. It says Q.S. Private Lending is providing a short-term bridge loan on the property. The borrowers own the store free and clear. They are utilizing the cash buyout to buy inventory in preparation for the summer, as well as perform maintenance and cleanup on the building. The lender would like to collateralize the property as well as put a lien on the inventory and liquor license. The borrower will immediately begin refinancing into a long-term loan with a lender that will not require a lien on the liquor license. So it looks like they need to, to, do some work.
So they're gonna, they're trying to reopen?
Yeah, that's what it looks like, yeah.
Alright, that's good.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Did we have a first and a second? I don't recall that. Uh, well, let's go back to it. So there's a liquor license, um, pledge of collateral. Um, I will entertain a motion to accept this pledge of collateral.
Motion to accept. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we have liquor licenses. Oh, no, we have a liquor license amendment, a change of manager, and I believe it's at the blue.
Yes.
So, this is Plum Island Blue. Um, they're just changing their manager.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, change of managers at blue. Second.
Any questions? Julie, do you have any comments on this?
No, we've done, this is a pretty typical one, we've done this a few times before.
Okay. So just so, I think Dana, you, this is new to you, but we're, as a licensing authority, we have, we have the fir-, like, we're the first, we have to accept it or deny it. Then everything that we do goes to the A B C C.
Yes.
And they may either, it has happened, kicked it back to us, or with amet-, um, amendments, or they just pass it. So.
They'll notify us if it's been approved.
Yeah.
They have questions.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. Now we have one-day liquor licenses for Mercury Brewing Spencer Pierce Little Farm Vintage Base Baseball. It's all the same thing, and they're all a number of, um, this dates, so if the board has no opposition to it, I'd like to just take it in one motion, and I'll list all the dates. Is that okay with the board? Okay. So it's a one-day liquor license.
No, I want you to read them all.
Starting at June fifth, two thousand, uh, is it all taking place in the year twenty twenty-two? June fifth, June twelfth, June eighteenth, June tenth, June seventeenth, nope, sorry, sorry.
July.
July tenth, July seventeenth, July twenty-fourth, July thirty-first, August seventh, August thirteenth, August twenty-first, August twenty-eighth, September tenth, September eighteenth, September twenty-fifth, and October second.
Uh, motion to accept is read.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next, we have a one-day liquor license application for Mercury Bu- Brewing Spencer Pierce Little Farm. This is Battle for Newbury, the Revolutionary War reenactment, October eighth and ninth. Now, I, I've never seen this before, and I'm really excited about this. Has it ever happened here before? I don't know, I don't ever-
About three hundred years ago?
Yeah. But I, I-
Very good. Let's get slap happy.
Where, where are you down there?
Yeah. So, I'm super excited about this. So I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept is, is read.
Any second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
One day, uh, hold this one more. One-day liquor license application for Megan Lord, uh, for a marriage.
You missed it.
Governors, governors.
No, no, I'm gonna come back to governors, 'cause J.R. can't vote on the Spencer Pierce Little one.
Oh, okay.
So, one day li-, for Megan Lord, a marriage celebration at Spencer Pierce Little Farm on June twenty-six, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now he can come back.
J.R., come back.
There is. We just did all the Spencer Pierce. Okay, now, I, we have a one-day liquor license application for the Governors Academy, their re- reunion, twenty twenty-two, June tenth and eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Can I have a motion?
Where is it?
Motion to accept.
It's at the Governors. Okay.
Governors.
Motion to accept. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I already did-
I am on a butter there. Is that in, should I recuse myself?
Probably.
There's a learning curve, we're not gonna. Okay. Beat you up about it, don't worry.
Yeah, if you upide anything, you probably shouldn't vote on it.
Right.
Okay. So business license renewal for Jasmine Lewin, Paul Rooney, Brad Dilbaro, Kim Su Dilbaro, uh, doing bob, uh, doing businesses Bob Lobster, forty-nine Plum Island Turnpike, Carmen Vicchular.
Motion to approve. Second.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Um, why are we getting this so late in the year?
Probably, because they was probably seasonal, and that's when they started.
They, they shut down completely, I thought it was just January they shut down.
Well, when Bobby Higginson started that, and he started it, believe it or not, out of his pickup, pickup truck in the back, so I think he, it used to only be seasonal.
Okay.
So that's probably why.
Okay.
If I had to guess. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a business license renewal for Steven Gad, Salter, and Transportation. One ninety-six Scotland Road, General Business School, Bus Transportation. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. This, I don't know why this is a no, but it is. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a new business, we have a new business license for Aaron Bly Studios, doing business as Dancing Goat Apothecary.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? This is at seven Marsh Meadow Lane Jewelry, Leather Goods, Soaps, Herbal Salt, Baths. That sounds nice. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. New business license Waldo Evan Jesperson, D.B.A. Jesperson Studio, seven Marsh Meadow Lane, Handmade Works of Art.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Request for public property use, ride to end Alzheimer's.
Did you exclu-, um-
New business.
We already did that, the business.
Oh, that's right. Good, good girl. Yep, you're right.
I checked it off. Okay, so now we have a public property use for ride to end Alzheimer's. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion.
Um, just to notify not to spray paint the streets.
Are they here?
I don't think so. I can send an email, I have a contact, so I can, I think I did that last year, also emailed them.
Yeah, thank you. Nothing that's gonna permanently ruin our streets. So Dana, this happened with time in the past. The road was paved and somebody spray painted on it.
Arrows, and then the next race comes along, and there's more arrows, and they're doing this.
Well, at least they're different colors.
True, true. I can pick my course every day.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Request for public property use, the Upper Green National Purple Heart Commemoration Ceremony, August seventh, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Bill, did you wanna come up and talk about this, so that everybody knows, or?
Bill, to me, I was called Orchard Street. I, I think you all remember that I s-, I pledged that I would conduct this national date, um, August seventh ceremony for the Purple Heart. Um, and also, I wanna tell you, on the grants, um, just make one correction, it wasn't a twelve-inch sign, it was twelve signs.
Sorry.
Okay.
So, should I, I'll go back and re-
It's typed as twelve inches.
Okay. I'll go back and re-vote that.
August seventh is, um, um, Yankee Homecoming as well, so we thought we'd be using some of the assets used at Yankee Ho- Homecoming would end up at, at the Upper Green, and it would be a ceremony to recognize, uh, all the veterans of Newbury who got the Purple Heart, any branch of service, every branch of service, current, um, and all past recipients of the, of the, of the Purple Heart, all branches of service.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, request for public property use, Newbury Town Day banner on the Upper Green.
Motion to approve. Second.
They wanna hang a banner behind where the baseball field is to promote this event? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reorganization of the Select Board. So we're gonna have to reorganize.
I move Alicia for Chair.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I'd like to move Jerry Heavy for Vice Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Jerry, I didn't, I didn't know you wanted any kind of leadership. You hadn't approached me at all with it.
Well, the Chair's, it's a different year, reorganize.
Yeah, but I didn't know you were interested in that, but, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion fails.
And then I'd like to make a motion that J.R. remain as Chair.
As Chair?
Excuse me, Vice Chair.
As Vice Chair. I'll second that. Now let's discuss.
I feel like you wanna stay Vice Chair?
I'm willing to serve the board and shoulder my share of the load.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Clerk.
Well, it's always been, except when I get nailed the other day, it's always been a tradition in Newbury that Dana, the new person. So you'll make a great clerk.
Are you gonna move that?
I would move that Dana become clerk.
Second.
It's, it, it, do, do I have to vote?
Don't worry, I'll help you if you need help.
It's like a lot of times, you'll be like assigning authority for the board.
It's not, not heavy.
You gotta read stuff, that's it.
Okay, alright.
You gotta read the public hearings, some things the clerk signs.
Appointments.
That are different, I, oh, yeah, appointments.
And, that's about it, yeah?
Yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, we also need to appoint, um, the veterans, uh, appoint the Select Board has, needs a veterans agent to serve on the liaison to the Eastern Essex Veterans.
Mike was at before, right?
Yes.
Are you, are, are you interested in that?
I'm volunteering for that, yes.
I make a motion to appoint Dana.
Second.
Perfect, yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's done. Now, we also have another, um, thing that's not really an appointment, it doesn't come with an appointment, um, like we appoint, but it's to the District Communication Committee. Um, I'd like to appoint, um-
But we don't appoint.
Well, we don't appoint, but we ask to serve, or we delegate service. So Jerry, I'd, I'd like you to sit on that with Jeff, 'cause I'd like to rotate off.
Schools. You'd be good, you'd like it.
District Communication.
I don't mean to say you'd like it, but it, it's good, you'd like it.
That's fine.
You just, you do that, okay.
What do we need, uh, maybe every second month?
Yeah, the, the, the schedule come out in the fall, and, um, the school committee runs them. They ru-, they run the, the Chair of the School Committee will send out the agenda, and they rotate. So it'd be when it's here, it starts off at Triton, and then they go to the three communities, and then they-
And is that to be the liaison?
It's like a liaison, it's, it's a-
And if there's a, if there was a really big need, every, you could post it and have everyone go, if there was a need for everyone to go.
Well, I think we should post it anyways, in case three of us go, 'cause we, I posted the last one we had, Dana came, so it was me, you, and Dana. So I think with the last time we happened, we, they should just automatically get posted.
One of the things is, there's a lot of stuff coming forward with-
The school.
Alternative assessment, a school, all these things, so it gets pretty interesting.
The eternal, this, they're looking at an al- alternative assessment piece? I'm gonna keep that one, because it is a lot of, it's, I mean, you're more than welcome to come with me if you want to, to the meetings, but it's a lot of historical knowledge that you, it's too much to get caught up, I wouldn't wish that on my friends, so, yeah, never mind that.
There's been, yeah, there's been a lot of tremendous work in the past, and they-
Alright, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Jerry and, and Jeff are the new D.C.C. Appointments.
You, you're gonna post it, so, Madam Chair, we can, like, if I wanted to go to learn more about it?
Oh, yeah.
I can volunteer to do that, and-
I thought, I thought at one point, if they were posted to public meetings, we didn't have to add that extra layer, but is that not true?
What do you mean, add that extra layer?
I thought Chuck dug into that.
Oh, it used to be that way.
But it's different now.
And in the handbook that I just reread, because Dana was a newly-elected Select Board member, and I said, "Well, I better read this, 'cause if there's any questions, I gotta know what's in there," so I read the whole thing, and they say in there, if you, it's a duly, if it's a duly-posted meeting of another board or committee within your town, and you are a, um, and you attend, it don't, it's not, pert-, doesn't pertain to the open meeting law.
Unless you're vo-, unless you're voting on something.
Except that we-
The ruling.
We ju-, so that's the way it always, always was, and that's what happened to the board, went to a duly-posted Council on Aging meeting, and a, a complaint was filed with the open meeting law, and they shifted. So they came out with an opinion, the board wasn't faulted for anything we d-, wasn't intentional, because even in the book, it says you can do that, but no more now. So I sent back comments to the M.M.A. that they have to get that out of there, because
Yep.
you can't do that anymore. Okay, Select Board's summer meeting schedule. We've only had one meeting in May, and we can see where that got us. We were here all night, it's ten fifteen, and we're still here. Um, so we're gonna have two meetings in June. Um, I'm only gonna, usually summers are slow, so I'm only gonna hold one meeting in July, which will be this fourth Tuesday in July, and the fourth Tuesday in August. Now, that being said, if something comes up and we have to meet, I'll send out a, a note, a text message, actually, is we should all exchange everybody's numbers, just text you, let you n-, see if you're gonna be around. We only need three people for a quorum. Um, I'll post the meeting, we'll attend, you know, we'll do, do it, and then, so, just because we schedule two meetings in the summer doesn't mean we're not gonna have two meetings.
Summers get quiet.
They do get quiet.
I thought we only used to meet once in June, too, no?
Yeah, but we only met once in May this time, so-
Yeah, but I, I don't mind meeting in June.
And also once in September when J.R. was to-
Well, maybe in September, we'll, they'd only do one meeting, too. We'll see what the-
July and August is fine, yeah.
We'll see what it's like.
We can also aim, you know, aim for one, if things start stacking up.
Yep.
Yeah.
But two in June?
Yeah, we're gonna need two in June.
And that would be the, the first and the fourth, or the second?
The second and the fourth Tuesday of the month.
In Ju-, in June.
Yeah, of every month.
Yep.
So sometimes one, sometimes months have an extra week, that's a bonus week, you So sometimes one, sometimes months have an extra week. That's a bonus week. We don't have to have a meeting. You get two weeks vacation. Okay, so, old business. Town admin, none, seeing none. Onto the Town Administrator's report.
Great, thank you. Town, annual town meeting was successfully concluded, as you all know, and we had a balanced budget, so no need to go back. Council on Aging, some news there. We were, are the recipients of a $68,000 grant for the purchase of a new senior van.
Yay.
So I will need your vote to accept that grant.
Motion to accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was the good news. The bad news is the cost of these vans are now ranging between $150,000 to $175,000. So the director did petition the Friends of the Newbury Council on Aging to see if they would cover the difference. And they declined to support the full balance, the $82,000, but they have agreed to provide $15,000 in funding towards-
See, is this going to be in addition to the old van?
Yes.
In addition, we're gonna have two vans.
We're gonna buy a new van. I don't know what they're gonna do. They'll have to petition you to-
That'll have value, too, won't it?
Oh, yeah.
Can't they fit that in on?
They, I don't believe they can, because that would have to have been part of the vote taken at the annual town meeting when they purchased it. Like, a lot of times in the motion, you'll hear us say, "And dispose of the other," like, we'd go to town meeting and we'd have a vote to purchase a new van for, you know, $150,000 and dispose of the old van. Well, we didn't have a town meeting vote, because we didn't know we were gonna secure the grant funding. So now-
I mean, is that, if that van's valuable, though, I imagine?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, we, we dispose of them. We go through a bid process for disposal.
And what, will that, will, you, will that money go back towards paying for this van?
No. That money closes to the general fund.
I got you.
So it becomes a component of free cash.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
Is it so, is the van so expensive, because it has the lift component?
It does, in the back. I don't know all the hydraulics that are involved with it.
A heavy-duty diesel pickup's over 70K, and I think you add all that, the accessibility and the seating, and they're more now.
No, I know.
They're 80.
I know, I know, I know. I try to just stick my head in the sand.
So, so Friends, so I have a question. So if they have, so they're gonna have two vans?
They have a van now, and we just got funding to replace that van.
Right. To replace it, okay. So eventually, once they-
But we don't have enough yet.
We're $100,000 short.
$100,000. Well, actually-
But wait, there's more.
Actually, there's more. So although they declined to pay the full balance, they did agree to give us $15,000 towards the purchase. So right now, we're about $67,000 short. So we're gonna continue to try and get some additional grant funding. We'll be approaching the banks, see what we can get. And once we've got a full packet together and we know, you know, what the balance is, they may even come back for upper fund requests. But they want to pursue all options before they come back to the board.
Okay.
Can we put an advertisement for the bank on the side if they pay for it?
Oh, yeah, sure. Why not?
I don't know about that.
I don't know. I don't know about that. Although, you know, when I think back, when I first came to work here, I remember seeing a dump truck, the DPW, that had-
Governor's.
A Governor's Academy-
Purchased by-
Logo or something on it. So, so maybe you can-
That's when they gave us money.
The C has, has, they're a government organization.
Why not?
Right, right.
Oh, it's gonna be on the side of the bus.
So I received notification from the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions that our agent Samantha Holt completed their fundamentals for Mass Conservation Commissioners. It's a training program that they offer annually, and she has received a certificate of achievement for that accomplishment. The program is offered to promote sound, consistent, fact-based decision-making, and builds respect for Conservation Commission decisions. Like the MACC, I'm a huge proponent of continuing education. I think it only benefits the community, you know, making sure we are current with all the laws and what's going on in our respective fields. And in, in that same vein, Suffolk University offers a municipal finance program. And on April 1st, our Assistant Town Accountant, Lillian Craig, became a graduate of that program. So that provides an overview of all of Massachusetts municipal finance, including the operational aspects of the finance structure, the systems, and all of the processes that would occur in all Massachusetts cities and towns. So congratulations to both Lillian and Samantha on their achievements.
And on behalf of the town, I'm thankful to have bright young people like that, willing to do what it takes to further themselves and, and continue to help the town out.
I agree.
Great thing.
Absolutely. More good news. We, I just received notification that we received $100,000 grant for the engineering and design cost for the Plum Island Emergency Egress Project. So I'd need a vote of the board to accept that $100,000 grant.
Motion to accept.
Second. Any dis-
Discussion, yeah, discussion? I'm, I'm just wondering, do we have, I was just down there. Do we have a pla, is the plan in place to do that? I mean, whether it's gonna be 12th Street or 14th Street, or, you know, where, where is it actually gonna be? Do we know yet?
The engineering is all in place. I can get you copies of the, the design work. And that's what this grant is paying for, the engineering that we've completed to date.
Okay.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll get that to you. We also received notification for the, from the state that we're going to receive an additional $176,000, almost $177,000 for road initiatives, because it, basically in response to this winter's harsh weather. So in addition to our Chapter 90 funds, we'll get this money on top of it.
Great.
So we'll be working with the GPW Director to see where those funds can best be used. And we got our Community Compact Grant-
Oh, we did.
Was approved in the amount of $250,000. And that will allow Newbury to fall more closely in line with current best practices regarding disaster recovery, redundancy, and everything that goes along with it. I asked Matt if he would be willing to make a presentation to the board, if you want the details, because that's way outside. It's fiber optic cable, basically, that will provide.
We got that grant. That would be great. We'll add him to another agenda.
Yep.
He could come back.
I know I sound like a broken record, but grants just don't fall into your lap. You need people that are engaged, know what they're doing, and, and know how to word these applications.
Grant writing is a whole field.
Right. We're lucky to have those people, too.
And we don't have a grant, right? A lot of larger cities and towns, probably where you were before, they have a whole grant-
Right, it's, it's a thing.
Administration function. So we're, this is pretty much department managers, myself, we're all working-
Other duties as assigned.
To kind of see what we can put together. So we're learning, we're all learning.
Say the success rate's pretty good.
Yeah, we're doing well so far. Also, wanted to notify you that the COA, in collaboration with the Eastern Essex Veterans Service District, is hosting a Veterans Breakfast at the COA at 63 Hanover Street. And that is on May 26 at 10:00 AM. Anyone that's interested in attending should definitely RSVP, so they make sure they have enough for everyone. And they can call the COA at 978-462-8114. And I've been advised that a representative from Seth Moulton's office will be attending. His name is Steve Bone, and he is the Veterans Liaison for Moulton's office. And if you haven't noticed, Plum Island paving is currently underway, and they are hoping to have it all completed by next week.
Oh, good.
And that's it.
Well, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay. So we have, under correspondence, we have a letter from Comcast saying that they're under new, they have a new government person. Digging. So we welcome Kerry Morris to Comcast, the Senior Manager of Government Affairs. That really doesn't bother the public. It's more for our own knowledge here. And then we also have another letter from Xfinity, changing services. We are committed to keeping you and our customers informed about changes to Xfinity TV series. Accordingly, please note the following changes to Xfinity channel lineup provided in your community. On August 8th, 2022, due to changes in business costs, AMC Plus on Demand will increase from $699 to $899 per month. Customers are receiving notices in their bills.
Did you say things were going down?
$699 to $899.
Smell a trick.
Yep. No, it went up. $699 to $899.
I know.
So then we have notifications from the Mass Division, well, actually, we have a letter of appreciation from the Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, members of the Massachusetts State and Local Public Health Workforces. Dear colleagues, this is dated April 6. The members of the Massachusetts Public Health Council would like to vigorously applaud the local and state public health workforce for extraordinary service during COVID-19. And we are writing to express our appreciation for all of your work during the pandemic. Managing COVID-19 over the past two years has been complex and difficult. Members of this workforce have worked long hours, managed adherence to continually evolving scientific information, handled upset and disgruntled patients and residents, all the while needing to adapt to regulations and develop guidelines for wearing masks, closing buildings, and distributing vaccine. This has been overwhelming for everyone involved. We are especially impressed with the range of your efforts in battling COVID-19, providing continuous data reporting, operating vaccine clinics, overseeing contact tracing, managing local testing efforts, and advising town administrators, councils, and select boards. Thank you for each of these activities, and thank you for continuing to address the broad range of other ongoing public health responsibilities of our state and local health departments. The Public Health Council is also aware of other stressors caused by COVID-19. While overseeing the pandemic for the state, you also have managed personal and family obligations. Some members of this workforce have lost family and friends, and some have experienced COVID-19 themselves. State and local public health workers have been harassed and threatened while carrying out this vital work. For each of these losses and challenges, please accept our acknowledgement and sympathy. As Public Health Council members, we convene monthly to review, advise, and make regulations for Massachusetts. We are partners with you in protecting and enhancing the public's health. You have our wholehearted appreciation for continuing to keep our health, our state healthy. Sincerely, the Massachusetts Public Health Council. So that was nice, because they did go through hell in a handbag. So now we have notification of the Division of Marine Fisheries, their digging schedule. We had shellfish affected on April 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th, 15th, 18th, 19th, 20th, 21st, 22th, 25th, 26th, 27th, 28th, and 29th of 2022. We also had shellfish closures April 8th, 10th, 17th, 19th, 27th, May 3rd, 5th, and 16th of 2022. And we have some correspondence regarding the airport clam flats, which-
And a lot of this is just when they can use a depredation plant and a few other things, so.
Oh, is it?
Except for the closures, yep.
Okay.
It's all good stuff.
And-
Yeah, yep. They come up with our clam flats.
Yep, there's the airport clam flats. Oh, it's Logan Airport, okay. I was thinking it was Plum Island. Okay, so, meeting updates. Any meeting updates from anybody? I have some.
It's my first meeting. So I don't have, I don't have any updates.
Thanks for the update.
When you go to your veterans thing, this is when you would report back to the board what you guys discussed. So I have two meeting updates. I'll have Jeff give the first one. That was the DCC meeting we had this week. Do you want to give it?
No, you go ahead.
All right. So Jeff, myself, and actually Dana, you could report on this, Dana, attended the DCC meeting this past week. It was held at the Firehouse in Byfield. And it was the last one of the year. We discussed, I had, actually Ethan was good enough to film it, so it's up. We discussed alternative assessment. We discussed the landlord-tenant agreement, which the hope is to bring it to town meeting. Tracy, thank you for participating in that one. I know you did a lot of work on that. The hope is to bring it to town meeting in the spring, just the landlord-tenant piece. It was kind of agreed that the, that the alternative assessment needs a lot more work. It's not ready to go anywhere fast, so. And then today, I also attended the Massachusetts Municipal, the MMA's Fiscal Policy Committee. I'm an appointed member to that, at the Fiscal Policy Committee. We meet monthly. Actually, I asked Tracy to jump in on me, because there's been some changes to the financial policies. Can you speak to it a little bit better?
I came in late.
Yeah, so there's, there's, they're just getting feedback on changes to financial management policies for municipalities. And they're just starting, and actually, the meeting went long, so they kind of cut it off. So next week, hopefully, next month, we'll talk, talk about it more. But, and they wanted feedback. Any, there's gonna be amendments to that. So that's going through the legislature. And they lobbied the legislature for us.
They'll report out any changes in the law later on?
Yeah.
So they're gonna give the schools all kinds of money?
They actually, we talked about that. We talked about Chapter 70 money. And we talked about, the Senate is, has increased their reimbursement for regional transportation to the cities and towns. They're gonna make it 100%. They've, the Senate has also doubled the per-child reimbursement from $30 a child to $60 a child. It falls short of the $100 a child that the MMA wanted, and that, quite frankly, what Triton needs. But it's better than $30 a child. So we'll be getting more money, the district will get more money that way.
The thing that always bothers me, though, is the state of Massachusetts can make a contract subject to appropriations.
Yeah.
So they promised you 100%.
They never give it to you.
They never give it. We don't have it. They can't give it to you.
There's a huge, there's also a huge surplus of funds.
There is this year.
A big number. So they're trying to figure out, they were gonna increase AIDS, the UGA, unrestricted government aid to cities and towns. They're gonna increase that money. So hopefully, we'll get, we'll get a bump in that. But I did bring up, once again, how that Student Opportunity Act leaves Triton beyond, and that there was some talk of AIDS for rural cities and towns. And after I gave my pitch to the group, we had somebody raise their hand out in the rural western part of the state that agreed with me wholeheartedly and went on more and more and more about the need for this. So it's, it really affects communities like ours up here, Triton, Penn Tucket, those type of communities, communities on the Cape, and even more so out west, where these kids can be traveling-
Bus, two and a half hour, you know.
Two and a half hours each way, because it's the community. So they have to do something about that. So if we keep griping about it, maybe sometimes something will change. And that's all that I have for meeting updates. Review of meeting minutes. I can have a motion to approve the draft meeting minutes of 4:12.
I've got abstained since I wasn't present.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the draft executive session meeting minutes of 4:12?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Just three on that one, Julie. Okay, and then, oh, draft meeting minutes from 4:26. That was that very short meeting. You weren't there either.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have warrants.
Motion to sign warrants. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have no executive session, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.